Six o'clock, we'll call the regular village board meetings to the board. Start with the roll call.
Halesworth. Goodman.
Here.
Herbison.
Here.
Heard.
Here.
Cotts.
Here.
Hey, Tim, this is Jamie. You're on, you're, you guys are muted right now, I don't know if you know that.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Mattoon.
Here.
Rapp.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum, so continue on. You pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on the agenda, certified open meeting law requirements been met?
A notice of the meeting and the agenda was posted at the three public places and the newspapers were notified.
Thank you for that. Down to number five, adopt agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Board has a motion, any comments or questions on the agenda? If all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
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 I'll oppose Nate. Okay, uh, number six is, uh, recognition of visitors, citizens input. Um, this is the time for anybody on the floor that's on part of the board or a toy that's gonna speak later. Anything you'd like to speak to? How's the time to do it? I didn't see any correspondence earlier, is there anything else?
Just Merry Christmas cards.
Merry Christmas cards, yeah, come take a peek. Alright, seeing none there, we'll move on to number seven, approval of minutes. It was just the one meeting on there, pretty short one from December, so kinda cut dry there.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
A second.
Motion is second. Approve the minutes as written. Board has a motion, any comments or questions on that? All in favor of approving the minute, the minute as written, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose Nate. Aye, so have it. On to financial report, number eight. So it's, uh, first shot at the year-end comparison, so you'll see that, and it's pre-audited, so it's pretty draft.
It's not even done with our internal.
Not even done with our internal parts, but, so it's a rough, rough, rough draft.
Yes, so thank you for saying all that, cuz I was gonna say that. I know we always wanna know how we're ending the year as far as revenues over expenditures, but it's really too early to tell. There's going to be quite a few more bills coming in, probably, plus the auditor will probably change categories of some items, but I'll just point out some of the bigger noteworthy things to call your attention to. So when we get to the expenses, you're gonna see that the police department, public safety went over budget, so I want to point out to you that they received a grant for eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars, and so that shows up on the revenue side, and that offsets the amount that they went over. And then another thing I wanna point out, Jared's gonna tell you more about it when we get later on in the agenda, but we did do journal entry and amending the budget, we showed it on here, so we could see how it worked with, for the five hundred and ninety-three thousand, that was for paying off the Raether loan. So you're gonna see that as the second highlighted item in the revenues. And then, we generally, when we adopt the budget, we adopt it by the bigger categories, so it doesn't matter if some of the smaller categories go over, we try to adjust that by having the other ones go under, and basically, the whole grand total, um, we like that to have more revenues than expenses, or at least to not have more expenses than revenues. And so you're going to see police, I, again, I told you that they went over, they had quite a few squad repairs that they weren't planning on, but then also you're gonna see that they went over on the office supply, and that was the grant for computers. Actually, um, the grant for computers is at the alternating expense, that's where that was quoted.
They also have the other grant.
They've had a couple, yeah. Alright, then, the other item that I was gonna call your attention to is the park alternating periodic expense, and that was for the outdoor rec plan and for twelve trees. And then the last highlighted item is showing the expense side for the transfer to other funds. So the money came from capital projects, went to general fund, then went from general fund to debt service, and the check was issued out of the debt service to pay off the Raether loan. So you, again, you don't need to get too worried about anything yet, um, as far as if you looked at individual accounts, because this is very preliminary, it's just way too early, there will be other bills coming in.
That's why the percentages are off.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't even done our internal audits, or, cuz we'll physically go through each line item and make sure that everything that's there has been categorized correctly, that we have the, everything coded as it ought to be, and we haven't even got to that point yet, um, we're very much so too early for a...
Yeah. Otherwise, are there any questions?
The twelve trees, are those the ones that people could, like, do they still have that option?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. A couple of them, we have received donations for, who knows, sorry, listed on the revenue side.
And we've got some plaques picked out, we have an order, but in the spring, we've got some plaques to
Okay, cool.
Put out on the trees for those who have.
Yeah, maybe a good time to do another push for the plaque that can show that, that's what you, they would see, and maybe that'd be appealing to folks, huh? To know that.
Yeah.
Um, on the, just a question on the, I can't recall for sure, but the, uh, outdoor rec plan, we, we said that was coming out of general fund, or did we, do you remember, anybody remember if we specified about that? Just maybe something to look into later.
Well, I wanna make sure that we pulled it all out of general fund, or if there's some of that sticking out of inland lake.
Yeah, remember, but we'll check.
That's, that's what I'm looking for, is to see if we pulled it all out of general fund, or if we pulled some out of inland lake. I know we discussed it, I don't remember if we ever determined we would or wouldn't. I know we talked about it, so we will confirm that and see where we're at, and...
Yeah, and I...
I thought it was general.
Yeah, but I, there was another, not, not saying that we decided to do that, but, but the, um, the Zeman equipment, it was sort of talked about too, not that we were gonna use it, but it was sort of an advance to be able to, if we wanted to be able to use that and get grant money to pair with it, then that was the step to do that, and I don't remember if there was a conversation that said...
There was never any authorization to spend Zeman money, Zeman money sat there, so we did spend that out of general fund. What I wanted to make sure is that we didn't have any inland lake.
Right, I, I remember talking about it, I don't remember that being what we decided, so that's what, just saying, like...
Short of board authorization, we're not touching any of those designated funds unless there's a motion that says...
Okay. Any other questions on the budget comparison? Alright.
You want a motion to approve the temporary?
I would, yes.
Motion to approve this temporary?
Preliminary.
Preliminary, better word, thanks. Budget comparison report?
Second.
Motion is second. Board has a motion, any last questions or comments there? Right, just, we'll call vote on that, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Herbison.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cotts.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Okay, number nine, on to that, is approval of bills.
So I updated it with the last-minute bills, and, like I did last time, I put a N by the numbers, you could see which ones were new since the Friday addition. And I also put a little orange circle next to the amount, so it was about a half a dozen that got added. And then, some of the non-common ones to call your attention to, the A-1 excavating, the repair for two sixteen South Wisconsin Street. Um, Ayers and Associates, there was a small bill for the East Randall Road, Phase One. Chippewa Valley Digital Design, the hosting fee for two thousand twenty-three. We had some copier repairs. We had the Eau Claire County Treasurer do their fall election for the publications, give us their billing for that. And then you'll see Kevin Mineholt, his yearly fee for the IT consulting services. Valley Builders, we did a master system and rekey. And then the Fire District for two thousand twenty-three, the first payment for the quarterly dues. Prochnow Assessing, the first payment for the two thousand twenty-three assessment services. And then the Department of Revenue, that is the state manufacturing assessments. And Union Providence, that is a bill that we get twice a year, so this is one half of the long-term disability. There was a repair of the dump truck. And on to the next page, they have, one of the non-common bills was the brush for the JD mower. That's all I had to call your attention to, are there any questions?
The, the little N by the, uh, Eau Claire Energy Cooperative?
It was just a new one that you hadn't seen in the Friday edition, yeah.
On, on the original one you sent.
So these are all the bills to be acquired from December's meeting?
From, yeah.
On the thirteenth till today?
Yes.
How does payroll work? Cuz payroll, I mean, it's twenty-eight days and you only have one payroll in there, and when I look...
There's more than one payroll, I, it's for the whole month.
Right.
I combine it, so there's more than one payroll.
Where do I see, cuz I only see, like, for yourself, I see eighty hours at the bottom from the thirteenth through the ninth.
Yeah, oh, well, maybe there is only one payroll here.
There's not, what, what days you guys get paid on?
Uh, Friday every other week.
Right, so there's like, if you look at Fri-, it just looks like there's one missing somewhere. Because there's just not enough, there's too many Fridays one way or the direction, I just, I, I, I just curious.
Eight hours instead of one hundred and sixty hours.
I, I try to...
Right.
Yeah. Um, I'll check, you know, like, sometimes there's so many different boxes that I have to check, sometimes I don't check them correctly. To get the correct report, we've had this happen before, so I'll check to see if I did something wrong on that report.
But that comes out of Flores, too?
It does.
As a report, I think, yeah.
It does. It has so many options that sometimes I don't remember the correct options to choose.
The top heading, uh, indicates that it ought to be the right option, I'm curious what's not been checked in the underneath, because your top heading should, from twelve thirteen to twelve six, I should have two payrolls in there.
Okay.
And the, your, your heading, so she can't independently generate these, you go in and select it.
I understand, it just, it just looked odd to me that...
It does look odd, you're, you're not, you're not wrong.
Yep, you're...
And I just, and I just, just, I'm not saying anything, I mean, it's okay, it's just, it doesn't appear to be... Anyways, I'm good with it.
We'll get the answer to that question.
Thank you.
It appears to be like two weeks versus a month.
Right, and I thought maybe because of the end of the year or something, we didn't run, but when the dates show that, the bills for that section, you know, the end of the year stops at one, wherever that was, was. The January starts new, if that, if that's the way it is, but, anyways.
We'll find out, I don't have the answer, but we'll find out.
I'm just remembering it right now.
Yeah, it could be, could be a tool, too, where you're reporting, and it's a cur-, it says current year only, and you can specify the dates, but it still is not gonna go past...
There, there, well, what I had done wrong the last time, it was in invoices, not in payroll, but it was in invoices, and I had chosen invoice date rather than payment date, you know, like, there's all these different boxes, they give you so many options, which is really good, but then the...
Well, I know we paid everybody, cuz otherwise it'd be jumping up in dollars.
Funny, I like that.
I just wanted to point it out that it appeared to look missing or wrong, so...
So payroll starts on the thirteenth?
It's just...
It's Tuesday.
No, that was, that was our last meeting.
Got it.
Yeah.
So if they get paid, if they got paid on Mondays, it, it could be different.
Got it.
But if they get paid on Fridays, there's enough Fridays that there should have been two payrolls in there, I would've thought.
So on, so what, what it's showing is that we were paid on the, the last time you guys saw this report was on the thirteenth, so if we were paid on the twenty-third, um, we would've been paid on the sixth, um, which would mean that we're missing one of those two, you're either not seeing the twenty-third, or you're not seeing the sixth, and where it's year-end, what I'm trying to decide, cuz a lot of times these get, um, queued in year-end, but my date is crossing, which is where I'm trying to figure out where I've lost it.
That's why I asked.
Cuz I think you're, I think what's happening is we're getting queued with year-end, but if that's the case, my heading should say twelve thirteen to twelve thirty-one, and I should have a new heading, and that's what I'm trying to figure out where, where I'm losing in the...
That's what's... I've seen we were having a cutoff date, and the, the first check in January, we're not seeing that because it's...
That's what's happening, but I've gotta figure out...
That would be my guess, but, I just wanted to point it out that it, it looked funny, and I'm sure it's there somewhere.
Make a motion to pay these bills for... Do we can we all do that? Which is gonna be a clue, could be period basis and not payment basis.
Some motion and a second to, uh, pay the bills. Board has a motion, is there any other?
Sheena, who was the second?
Matt.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I bet you that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
We do a roll call vote?
We found it.
It's a difference in payment basis versus, if you're hundred cent, right, we're, we're queuing in.
You didn't check the right box. Alright, so we're going with this, we're good to go? Herbison.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cotts.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
I'll PDAF it and I'll put it on your packet, so that you can see it.
I'm good.
Report of the village administrator, uh, there's a, there's a ten A, how, which order you wanna do things?
Yeah, I just, we didn't, we don't necessarily have a standing spot for Colin, but I wanted Colin to be able to, uh, to vote, or I'll do mine and let Colin, yeah, I'll do mine and then let Colin go, if that's alright.
Sure.
Obviously, Christmas, um, issue last month, one of the more important things that I did attend is I did attend a meeting in Altoona to talk about EMS services, um, so Altoona, as you guys know, we have a contract with Eau Claire Fire to be our designated EMS, if the pager goes off, it's Eau Claire Fire that's gonna come. There's a, there's a payment we pay every year essentially to have them provide that service to us. This year, it was, twenty twenty-two, should say, last year, it was ten dollars per capita that we paid them, and then they got, you know, their billing rate, and whatever they were getting, either from Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, they handle that all independently. That's gotta graduate, and it's getting more and more expensive, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, forgive me on the year, I don't remember, it was still subsidized by the hospitals, it was free to us. It gets more expensive each year. Anyways, Altoona's contract is not, well, let me back up, essentially, for most of the municipalities and townships are under a similar contract, Altoona's under it, you get Township Fire, Seymour, I can't remember if Seymour's in Township Fire, but most of the townships, um, Fall Creek, Luddington, Bridge Creek, all are, Augusta, Bridge Creek, Fairchild, they're under a separate agreement with Mayo out of Osseo, but essentially us and every, Luddington, Lincoln, headed back towards Eau Claire, most of the other townships are under an agreement with Eau Claire Fire. Altoona has about half of it, and everybody else put together has the other half of the call volume. Altoona's contract expires before ours, so theirs expires at the end of this year. Um, and in their conversations with, uh, Eau Claire Fire, it sounds like they're going to be looking at a fairly substantial increase. Um, I think by the end of our contract, we're supposed to be at fourteen, fifty, or fifteen dollars, something. Looks like, at least the preliminary numbers that were floated out for Altoona's renewal was twenty-four dollars per capita, which is obviously substantial. So Altoona is weighing their options, um, they invited, uh, they invited myself and some of the other town boards to a meeting to say, hey, we're, we're gonna talk to Mayo, we're not saying we're doing Mayo, we're not, but we wanna have a conversation. And I appreciate Altoona including us in the room, because ultimately, whatever Altoona ends up doing, if they do it as a group and there's a, some collectiveness, that, that'll wonderful, we'll have a voice at the table. Otherwise, we're gonna get to choose to do what somebody else did, cuz for our hundred call volume, we're not gonna be able to negotiate a contract significantly different than, than what's going on. So I appreciate Altoona inviting us, uh, to that meeting. I get they're the much bigger brother in that relationship and how their contracts go, but that's something I think you guys ought to be aware of, they are gonna hold another meeting. It's all very, very preliminary at this point, but they're compiling numbers, trying to see what that entire service area is, they're talking with Eau Claire, they're talking with Mayo. That's obviously something that's gonna affect us coming down the road, and I wanted that, everybody to be aware of that, was the case. As far as election for this board, we don't have to hold a primary, so we are very happy about that. Um, we have two candidates for president, and we have six candidates for, um, for trustee, so all of our incumbents are running, and then we've got three challengers and one challenger for president, so, we're excited not to have to hold a primary, and we'll just have our regular spring election, well, that's not true. We still have to have a primary, but it's for the school board. We don't have to, uh...
School board and then Supreme Court.
And Supreme Court, but there still will be a spring, just...
There still will be people coming, the twenty-first of February.
But it won't be a village election, it'll, well, we'll start on that, but, yeah. We've been receiving taxes, um, we really like this new system we're doing, um, it's so much easier to reconcile, we're doing a much, much better, between the counties improvement and having Polaris as opposed to Workhouse, uh, collecting taxes has been a much, much more streamlined process, and it's eliminated a huge ability for, um, for data entry error, where you can be off two cents and spend eight hours trying to figure out where that two cents went, cuz we do have to, we do have to be perfect in getting people's taxes, and, um, our, our new system is working so much nicer. So we're really, we're really pleased by that. The police department is gonna, uh, give us a report on, on their cases over the year, but you'll notice that December has been down, um, from where we've been, which is great. I wish, uh, cases would go down every year, every month, every year, year and we're in, we'd have no crime and no need for a police department, but for some reason, I don't think that's the way it's gonna work. And then Public Works, um, the big, the big takeaway from Public Works is just six, no events. Had a fairly active, uh, December slash beginning part of January, so... Also, we had a water break on two sixteen Wisconsin, you guys saw the bill for that a minute ago. There's not a lot we can do about it, but we could have another water break, so that is my report.
Thank, thank you. Uh, any questions for Jared on board?
And the new report for the payroll pay summary is now on your packet. I just added it behind, so you'll see the old one and the new one.
Need school?
See none? Colin, are you ready to give your year-end recap?
Yep.
Need anything from you?
No, um, so the only thing that you guys should have in your packet is a spreadsheet with a five-year analysis.
And it looks awesome.
Well, thank you, actually, Renee helped with that, so...
Thank you.
It's got that nice green color that we liked in all of our spreadsheets?
That was me, okay.
Kind of a cricket thing, yeah.
I'll take credit for that. Uh, thank you guys for having me here tonight. The police department, we went through, and we did a actual five-year analysis for call volume and types of calls for service, just to kinda compare where we've been, and then kinda through COVID, where we hit, and then kinda where we're going to now. Um, that's what's in your packet there, um, you should see two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-two's call volume. Some things that, when we did that analysis, we just wanted to kinda bring, uh, as we kinda reviewed that as the police department, some things that were worth noting, uh, is that you'll see in the spreadsheet there, for, at the top, you have Fall Creek Police Department's total cases for each one of those years. Uh, two thousand eighteen was four hundred and twenty-one cases or calls for service, uh, two thousand nineteen was four hundred and fifty, two thousand twenty was three seventy-five, twenty twenty-one, one seventy-nine, and then last year, we were back up to four thirty-one. Uh, and obviously, there's that, quite a dip, as you can see, between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. And when we viewed those, that dip, it primarily occurred between July of two thousand twenty and June of two thousand twenty-one. That's where we saw the most reduction in call volume come in. Reasons for this, that we could kinda see is low staffing levels at the time. There were very few part-time officers, um, available to fill shifts, obviously, with the, we were still dealing with COVID going on, so there was a less calls for service possibly, or less initiated activity on the police department, uh, just based on what was going on at the time. Talking with some of the staff that was here, there also may have been some low department morale going on at the time that they were dealing with, I wasn't here, uh, but those are some of the things that you kinda see in that dip as possibly kinda where the police department was at in that time period. Then obviously, you see two thousand twenty-two, the call volume is back up to four hundred and thirty-one cases. Something worth noting that we found in two thousand twenty-two, the, the case numbers are back up, but in the first four months of the year, we were still dealing with a very low staffing issue. Officer Stenson was still on leave from January first until April fourth. During that time, we did have two part-time officers, uh, but they only worked twenty-five shifts, leaving seventy-three shifts available. So the primary person working during January to April was myself, we did not have much staffing available during that time period. So during that time period, a lot of our calls for service were going to the Eau Claire County Sheriff's Office, just due to staffing levels. But once we got past April, uh, during two thousand twenty-two, we brought on another part-time officer in August. We also implemented a requirement for part-time staff to work a minimum of sixteen hours or two shifts per month. This is to help with filling those shifts, and also to keep our officers up to date on what's going on in the police department, what's going on in the community, so we don't have a training issue or a lack of performance issue with, they're off for several weeks at a time. Uh, so that's things that happened during two thousand twenty-two. We also increased our involvement in the community, I believe substantially. Uh, officers were encouraged to do self-initiated activities such as traffic stops, checking businesses at the school, checking out at the parks, just stepping out with people, so I was really encouraged during two thousand twenty-two to increase that presence in the community, and some of those increase in case numbers you'll see were from officers conducting self-initiated activity like that.
And is that police service?
That I'll kinda get into here in just a second, yes. So the police service calls, actually, a large percentage of those were because the police department took over bartending background checks. So prior, uh, before two thousand twenty-two, those were done by the village clerk's office. They were handling most of the background checks, and the police department just kinda signed off on them. Uh, we started taking those over in two thousand twenty-two, where the police department completed all the background checks, they did all of the research, prior to sending the packet back for board approval. So a lot of those police service you see in there is the police department doing the background check and the work behind those bartender licensing, so we were not previously doing before. Uh, you also notice there's an increase, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So there, there is financial reasons for that, too, right?
Well, we still pay the same amount, whether I run them, the bill, yeah, whether the trust, the clerk runs them, or the I run them, we still pay the same seven dollars, I believe it is.
Depends on what it's used for, if it's used for bartender licensing.
Yes.
Pay for it if you're using it on the other side.
Yeah, so when I run a background for a police applicant, that's free, if we run it for a bartender, there's still a fee for that. Uh, you also notice there is a increase in parking type complaints, as you see there. Part of this was, we went through and revised the parking ordinances and things like that throughout this last year. And with that, we also got a lot of complaints coming in about those new revisions, as far as people recognizing that and calling in complaints about the new vehicles in violation of those new ordinances. So we did see a large increase, uh, in those parking types, uh, calls for service. Officers are also now required to take a case number or create a call when a parking citation is issued. Uh, previous to this, there was no reports being done, there's really not a good way of tracking parking citations without there being a record of it in our call system. So now, the one increase in parking complaints is because we actually are having officers take case numbers when they issue parking citations, makes it easier for doing data and things like that later on. Makes it easier for doing data and things like that later on. You also notice the increase in traffic stops that are in there. Now, that's not to say that we have done, stepped that much further out in traffic, but prior to this last year, case numbers and reports were not being done on traffic stops unless there was an arrest made. So prior to two thousand twenty-two, the reason why you see such a low number of traffic stops is because they weren't being, taking a case number and doing a report for it. They were just issuing a citation and letting the person go. So there's not a really good way prior to two thousand twenty-two of counting how many traffic stops were actually done with a citation being issued. I don't have that data. So the large increase in traffic stops is we've changed the way we do traffic stops. So now anytime there's a citation issued or some type of enforcement action taken, we take a case number and do a report for it. So that way, it's easier to track later on how many violations we have and how many citations are issued and such. So that's why you see kind of that spike in traffic stop case numbers. The other thing that you'll see an increase in is juvenile cases. Big part of that is we're becoming more active in the school and the school is feeling more comfortable contacting the police department and having us come out and check on if they're having a situation with a juvenile or if they have some concerns about things. They're having, we have that relationship building with the school now where they call us to come in as before, where it seems like there was a little bit of trepidation about, well, should we call the police department or should we not? We've built that relationship to where they just call us and we come there and assist with what we can.
So is that the juvenile is creating the, the problem? Or is, is it just kind of a blanket, like they're involved in some type?
Juvenile cases kind of a blanket. It's usually the juveniles creating a problem, but it could be opposite. It's, it's a very blanket case call that we can put in there. Unfortunately, we don't, the, the system we have doesn't specify too far down into what type of juvenile call it is. We just get juvenile call. So unfortunately, I could go through the stats and go through each report and specify those more, but right there, that's just all we have is a kind of overview of those type of cases there.
Who handles truancy?
So in part, the school and then in part, the police department. So I'm actually working with a school right now on a couple of truancy issues. But generally, it's a school issue until it gets to the point where they need to have enforcement taken such as citations and referrals. Then they'll work with me on that and we'll go down that route. And I believe that is, oh, one last thing I wanted to just draw attention to is at the top, you'll also see EC SO total cases right under the FCPD total cases. That would be the sheriff's office. That is how many cases for each of those years that the sheriff's office took in the village of Falk Creek. So we are still noticing that even though we have staffing increases and that our calls for service have gone up, that the Eau Claire County Sheriff's Office has still been taking more calls in our village over the last several years. That's all the, I had to point out, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you know what calls the sheriff's office is taking?
I can break that down even further, yes. So we have access to all of their calls as well.
Does it happen to be a couple of common ones?
So they tend to, if it's something that can be referred back to us later, they, they won't necessarily take it. So if there's a theft that's not in progress, they'll just have it sent to us afterwards. A lot of the ones that you'll see is they handle disturbances, domestics, check persons, check vehicles, things like that that can't hold, those are the ones they tend to be taking more frequently for us.
Let me refine the question. Does it have to be towards some of our frequent flyers of the past?
There, there might be some of those, yes.
I would just like to point out something that I've seen. I don't know if you guys have seen it, if you guys have heard, but my wife was, I don't remember what we were talking about the other day, but she pointed this out to me, I thought it was worth pointing out. We are hearing in the community a lot more about seeing, seeing officers, seeing officer sentencing, seeing nick, seeing call-in out in the community, in particular around the school. I mean, that's obviously the community my wife tied into with my daughters. But it's something people are noticing and something people are commenting on. And I thought it was, I thought that was a note and a positive action that when you're seeing, when people in general are seeing the police department in there, when we hire Colin, we talked a lot about community policing and about we want to, we want to see a department that's involved, you know, that people know who you are, know where you're at, that the only time they see you isn't when you show up to give dad a ticket for speeding or for drugs, you know, whatever the, whatever the enforcement action is. And I think that's something that we really see over the past year and something that I think the police department ought to be commended for because it really has done a really good job this last year.
Well, and a big part of that goes to our officers. Every officer I've had a conversation with when I first started here was, I want you to be out in the community. I don't want you to be sitting at the police department. I want to see you out there, I want to hear about you out there. We added the social media page, Facebook, and we get, to get the videos back from people that I see my officers out there pushing kids on swings and playing basketball. And that is the interaction that we've really been trying to get into the community. And it seems to be going well. And that was something we noticed a lot in two thousand twenty-two, is that we did have a lot of feedback from the community, that they were seeing our officers out there and that they were interacting and it seems to be going really well, so. Any other questions?
I have a couple. Can you, can you tell me what cleared by warning means?
Oh, sure. So then you'll see under disposition. So cleared by warning would be if somebody issued a warning. So they go to an ordinance complaint and it's allowed.
A tail light out?
Uh, that would be traffic, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so these aren't counting traffic warnings. We haven't gotten to the point where we're doing the traffic warning logging yet.
Yep.
These would be more, they go to a loud music complaint and so they give the person a warning.
Okay.
So it's cleared by a warning. If you go up one, the cleared by parking or traffic citations, that's how many cases were cleared by a traffic citation or issuance of a parking citation. One more up would be how many were cleared by an ordinance citation and then the other one is cleared by an adult arrest.
Right, right. So what I was looking to see in the data is if there was a way that I could marry the idea of, well, let me ask you this question first. I saw it in here and now I can't find it. It was, oh, police service. There was a police service and there was another one. But I guess I'm looking to see if you are tracking when you or your officers stop somebody and give them a verbal warning or give them a written warning, whether it's a traffic thing or a, are you keeping track of that?
That's the next thing we're actually going to get moving on to is, we, this is already an improvement from where it was. And now the next step is we're going to be having our officers issue an actual written warning with every traffic stop if it's not a citation issued. That way, we can track through our programs how many warnings were issued. Because then I can go back through all the programming and I can do that without adding additional case numbers, just add case numbers. But if there's no real enforcement taken, it's just a warning where you can let the person go and you're not expecting anything back, like the correction. We're going to start tracking those as well this year to try to keep an eye on track of how many of those are up to.
I would really love that.
Yep.
I think it would, it would help boards in the future. One of the reasons we landed here, when we landed here, is, well, I had a conversation with Cory when he was the police chief, before we even moved here. And we were looking for Mayberry, RFD. And, but crime's going to, crime has a potential, especially in the environment we're in right now, to really spike. And if we're keeping track of the amount of time our officers are out there and, you know, giving verbal warnings instead of automatically citing somebody, it's just a good piece of data to have when somebody comes in and says, well, you guys always arrest everybody or you always, you know. No, sir, we actually, here's how many times we've stopped people if they were speeding or we, you know, we didn't call somebody to jail.
Yep.
Automatically, he, here's the data here, you know.
And I review all of the dash cam videos that come through. I'm, I review everything before it gets sent into our records. And I can tell you, it would be nice because the, the amount of traffic stops that end in warnings versus citations is substantially higher.
I don't doubt that.
Yep, and so I, the next year, because we'll continue on this to next year, we'll add next year's numbers in here as well. We'll add a column in there for traffic stops with warnings.
That will be wonderful. Thank you.
What's undesirable?
Undesirable will be generally somebody that's not wanted in a particular place. So if you have some, for an example, you respond to a house because someone's refusing to leave the house, they usually classify that as undesirable. As opposed to a fight, that would be a disturbance, you know. There's a little bit of a difference depending on which way the, the call comes in.
You don't, you don't think it was a good idea to put like murder zero, 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 zero?
Well, I, I tried to do the calls we've actually had. And then I put that on there.
How many bank? Yeah, right, right, right. How many bank?
Exactly. And I should reference, this is just the majority of the calls. There's a few odds and ends in there that just happen so rarely that we didn't put them in here, but this is going to be the majority of the calls that you, you see.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I did notice the, the ordinance complaints going down quite a bit. So is that offset by the rework of?
In all honesty, I believe that was because in the previous years, ordinance complaints were being miscategorized. And that's why you see nineteen, twenty-three, thirteen, and then starting with Nick, then we started to see them.
Did they show up as something else then?
They probably were categorizing as an ordinance complaint and maybe it was a parking complaint.
Okay.
But they weren't specifying it down further so we can get a better idea. And without going through four hundred and fifty cases individually, I, I can't specify them down even further, but.
I was just maybe thinking that maybe that offset the parking increase a little bit, but.
When I saw the differences, I thought, well, you know, previously they categorized them as ordinance and now they're parking.
I'm assuming that that's what happened is they were previously counting all ordinance as ordinance and not specifying them down further.
This is the, this is the best set of data I've seen.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And kudos to the empowering your deputies like Kevin Doan, I think that's really showing. Well, you're seeing it and I think everybody else is seeing it too.
They've been doing a great job.
Yeah.
They did a great job last year and we're hoping to just continue that to this year. All right, well, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we went on to eleven committee reports. Anybody have anything?
I do.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the Parks Committee wanted everybody to know that Matt and I went to Green Bay Lambeau Field and accepted the seven thousand dollar grant for playground equipment at Keller Park. And we did that on December the eighth. They gave out one point two five million given to communities. There were two hundred and forty-three organizations that won grants. Forty-nine of seventy-two counties were recipients. The average grant amount was five thousand, one hundred dollars. We got seven thousand. Minimum grant was four thousand, the maximum grant was eight thousand. So we got upper and the upper one. I also spent quite a bit of time talking to Ray French. He is the Regional Economic Development Director for these Wisconsin Economic Development Grants that we talked about at the last meeting. There's different ones and to see if we would qualify for anyone, because from their website, it looked like we could qualify. But he, he put it very nicely. He said, I'm a little nervous that your project is not quite what we're looking for. They're looking for, they call them pocket parks. So like in, more in, not, not Keller Park was too far away. I told him, it's not that far, it's less than a half a mile, you know. Said, is there a sidewalk out there? I said, well, for part of it, but we go over the railroad track, you know, and then they're, anyway. He, he said.
Crystal Creek?
I'm sorry?
Would Crystal Creek qualify?
Crystal Creek?
As a pocket park?
No, it has to be downtown. It would have to be like it.
The parking lot.
Right here, the parking lot between these two buildings. They're looking for something to bring people into the downtown area or to renovate or rejuvenate an old building that's the village.
How about our lawn back here? We could put a pocket park behind.
Most of the lawn's not ours.
Oh, sorry.
Anyway, so I talked to him about, well, you know, sometime in the future, we're looking at trails in Keller Park. And he said, okay, we're really stretching this out. So he said, don't even worry about applying, so.
Okay.
Didn't. So that one's that one, but at least we got seven thousand dollars from the Green Bay Packers Foundation. And then as far as the eagle update, I wanted to let you know, the nest is up there. And when we put that nest up there, we immediately ordered all the equipment for, there has to be a radio camera on the sending end and then the receiving end here, we're going to put in the library. All that equipment finally arrived just a week and a half ago. It's been on order the whole time, but they were missing this part and they couldn't get that part. Anyway, it's all here. And then we had the tech that was installing the library part come and start to work on that, but we can't get the signal, there has to be a line of sight from that eagle's nest. It's a, just a radio signal that's going to come and carry the camera signal to the library. And it's, the bank is the problem, we can't get the signal around the bank. And so I talked to Jared at length about it anyway. So it's going to be put in my office. And so just so you know, the equipment, my, my business is one who's purchased the equipment. It's ten thousand dollars worth of equipment with the camera and all the radios and the solar panels and all the rest. So the next part of project, of course, when the equipment arrived, I've been, Excel Energy's been waiting to go put the pole in. And so I called them and then the crew chief is on vacation this last week and so she's just going to be able to get a hold of her this week. And then they'll have to see about the ground, if it's too frozen and, you know, can they get the truck back there? And Jared has been very kind to say that the public works will do whatever they have to do to, you know, plow and, you know, let it get iced over and so they're going to come.
It'll happen.
It'll happen eventually, but all the equipment is here. And the receiving end is now set up in my office. They had to run thirty feet of cable, anyway, that's all done now.
So it can go back to.
As soon as it's, we get it up on the sending end, it's up in the tree, so.
There's no towers can you put on the roof here?
I don't know, wasn't. It's been done other places.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be that much, you know, pull up the thing to get a tower.
Do we have anything high enough?
Well, that's why you make a tower, make you busy, put a tower.
Oh, put a tower up, oh.
To give you line of sight.
Is it on your roof?
Yeah, it's on the roof. It's on the roof, the dish is on the roof. So this is a lower roof. So it is, there is a line of sight. He actually took his bucket truck and went up and he, it is line of sight from there, from my office to there, so.
Sweet.
And that's fine, then they, I've got room in my office to put another little. And it's going to be, by the way, it's on YouTube. So the, we've got a program, it's a certain program so that you can be on any computer anywhere. And so you can go to the library and they can dedicate a station if they want to so that the eagle's nest is always, oh, this is what's happening in the eagle's nest at the moment. But anybody anywhere in the world can, you know, just come onto the website and see what's happening in the Falk Creek at the eagle's nest. So I don't know if there's an eagle up there. I can't, even with binoculars, I can't see over the lip. I don't know if you can from where.
He's been around. I don't know if he, I mean, he hasn't been up there, but they've been flying around.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's been eagles, I've been seeing eagles fly around.
He has got, he, it, that, them, whatever.
It didn't send an email with the.
Has a nest.
On highway twelve.
North on, north on highway twelve, yeah. But what I noticed was, a couple of times I've noticed the eagle over the pond. I wouldn't be surprised.
It may be up there, but I, it's fifty feet in the air. So I mean, I'm hoping that when we install that camera, because it's going to be installed right there, you know, so it can see in the nest and the camera can rotate and, you know, also look at other things. And so, and so that can be controlled by the computer station and on the receiving end. But I'm hoping that the eagles will forgive us and still come back if they're there and we won't scare them off. So there's nothing we could do. I mean, it just, it just took that long to get the equipment. That's all my update.
Sheena, do you have anything on there? Finance, economic development, there's a meeting coming up on Thursday. So there's a couple of things we'll be talking about here that'll likely end up on there, but we, the broadband, there's been some research and some information, so we, we'll be talking about that too on that. So if you're interested, I can't remember the assignments, but that's Thursday at five, is that right? Other than that, I, there's a draft that I put out here and I guess for now, we'll, we'll pop this up on Thursday as well. But I, I wanted to share it here just in case, because I think I'm going to ask for. But I, I wanted to share it here just in case, because I think I'm gonna ask for some help on, on some slides for a couple of reasons, like if you feel like there's anything of benefit that when you came on or started, if, you know, that would have been beneficial, beneficial information, just to get a slide put together for that, like grant information, just to have a place where, you know, maybe this individual's name, the websites or whatever. So that it's kind of a commonplace for, well, for onboarding and getting information. So if people wanna start doing research on their own and start, you know, taking initiative that they do, can at least have a kickstart on things. So I think, Renee, were they on there?
Yep, it's on eleven.
So take a look, like I said, they're splashed with the draft or some of them are ready for review. But if you get a chance, take a look through the slides. I think I wanted, there's one for Inland Lake, maybe Karen Herbison or Ryan worked on. And there's one for grants that I was asking for some, you know, fill in some from there. Any, anything else that, that you can think of? We can throw a slide together and get, get some information put together. So I, I tried to go through just, you know, a board structure, meetings, open meetings, closed, just high level, but then also references somewhere if you wanna get a little more into the details, where those things are at. iPads, tried to go through, put iPads, Outlook, you know, different things that you gotta set up when you start with that. Zoom, different committees. I think also from the committees, I guess, if you guys wanna do that, kind of like a charter statement, I tried to do that, but if you look at it and say if you, you got some different words that you're, think your committee, you know, go ahead and, and fill that in. But yeah, intergovernmental attendance, I think those are good things too that we go to that, you know, if there's recurring meetings, whether it's highways, roads, anything county related around the area, that, you know, that it's a place in all I care. Here's what's going on normally. If I find that, you know, wanna get involved in some of those, those are available. Some of the other ones would be, I'll have the staff work on, but, you know, how somebody comes on and how they'll look at the financial statements and what they're looking at, you know, how do you tell, what's a credit card? And how do you track that? And what are the bills? And when you get to budget, you know, when that happens, you know, what are, what are funds? You know, how, I wanna know what debt is, you know, how do I tell what's debt, what's bad, you know, what's, what's belongs to water, what belongs to sewer? You know, just little helpful tidbits with that, you know, not, not to be verbose, but at least get people thinking about. This is kind of how it's structured.
What C E R?
Yeah, C E Rs, capital C E R.
And TIFs.
Yeah, so we could, yeah, we could probably have a slide on acronyms, you know, and, and, you know, that would be helpful too. So yeah, it, it, I don't know, it seemed like I was gonna be able to whip it off pretty quick, but it takes a lot of, each slide takes a lot of better research and data to make it sure you got the material. But, so. Yeah. We'll talk a little bit more on, on Thursday, but if you feel like you see that or if there's something missing, just let me know and I'll throw a slide in there as a placeholder. And then as we get it ready, we can hand it out if we, or use it however we want. Maybe we'll put it on three sixty-five or something like that too, so it's kind of a live document. Or if you wanna edit it, you can. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, unfinished business, nothing there? Nope. New business, Gareth's here, thirteen A, consider improvements on Randall Road. Jared, you wanna?
Yeah. So this last month, Gareth and I attended a meeting with Cody and their engineering firm to discuss Randall Road, what the requirements were gonna be for the development on the south side. You remember when we started talking. They're, they're getting ready to put in their, their plat map, you know, how wide the road is gonna be, what the distance between intersections, all, all the information that's required for our ordinance for the plat map. And they just wanted to have a preliminary meeting and make sure that they understood what was and wasn't required. There's a couple of things that we anticipate variances that they're gonna request. They're gonna request variance on our type of curve. We require one type, they wanna roll over curve. We've heard some of this before from other developers about where they would want that. They're also gonna put in a request on the width of some of the roads inside the development. If there's any movement on the thirty-six feet, you know, if we could consider a thirty-three or thirty-two. And I, we just flat told them that they're gonna have to put that in variance. That's Village Board, or the planning commission and Village Board are gonna have to go through, go through those and make a decision. Make sure to put them as separate variances and Gareth can, can speak to that if we want to at this point or when those variances come up, he's kind of looked into it as far as his recommendation. But, but I guess why the agenda item is really here is to discuss what we are gonna do on Randall itself. So if you, if you remember, we had a little bit of money left over in twenty twenty from the construction of McKinley, which we were able to put on to Randall Road for the looping, water looping project and sewer main extension. So between State Street and Wisconsin, there was no prior water main line in existence. We did connect those and we put in three hundred and twenty-five, or forgive me on the station, something like three hundred and twenty-five feet of sewer line draining back to State. And then we had to, you know, put down a new road base and obviously new asphalt on that portion of the road. We put in some service laterals going south, knowing that there might be some development there. But we put them in a hundred foot front, it was a hundred and twenty feet. We've got three service laterals going to the south. The new proposal's gonna require quite a lot of cuts in that section of the road as well as the section of the road from Wisconsin to South White Street, which that utility was installed in nineteen sixty-six, the water line. And I think the, I have to pull up my spreadsheet, I wanna say it was seventy-one, but it might have been seventy-two for the sewer line. Anyways, a little bit older. But we're talking about sixteen cuts to that road and cuts to the main underneath. As part of this project, this developer is going to be required to put, as, as in our ordinance, they're gonna be required to put in a curb and gutter and sidewalk on the south side of the road. They're gonna develop, they're gonna have to improve the street. That will also include widening the street slightly, like tacking a parking lane on more or less. I think our ordinance calls for forty-two feet on artillery roads. Anyways, but that, that street is going to have to be widened. We know that. It's been in the numbers that, you know, CNN's been talking about as they've been proposing, hey, we think, you know, it's gonna cost us X amount of money. These are all known costs. The problem is that if we go cut in, we can go tack on, you know, eight feet parking lane on the south side of the road, build up, you know, cut off the ditch vegetation, come and put some sand, you know, twelve inches of road base and pavement, and we'll have a lane tacked on to the outside and then use the existing road elevation to set curb, gutter and sidewalk off of. And then we'll have, you know, sixteen cuts in that road into an old main. And then do we, do we talk about extending sidewalk and sewer or curb and gutter on the north side? Or we can put curb and gutter on the south side? Obviously, if we do it on the north side, that's never had curb and gutter. So that would involve special assessing the property owners that are putting it in. Everybody who's got curb and gutter, our ordinance requires the first time it goes in for it to be paid for by the homeowner after it's rebuilt, it's a different story. But the first time curb and gutter goes in, that's paid for by the, well, paid for by the homeowner. All questions. There are questions that CNN honestly is going to need an answer to. From a, from a pure engineering standpoint, well, I guess I won't say that. We'll let Gareth speak from the engineering standpoint. From my perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense to cut a road sixteen times and allow patching into a tackling. We will have a messed up road. And then it'll be the ultimate patch mail if we tack on a lane on to the south, put sixteen cuts in it and then tie on to utilities on between Wisconsin and White Street at least that are from nineteen sixty-six and nineteen seventy-one. So the question is, do we, do we do the bare minimum? Because that, that, that much at least has to happen. You have to tack on the south lane. They have to build sidewalk and they have to be able to cut at least sixteen times per laterals. Or do we say, you know what, now is the time where we are going to reconstruct Randall Road from, do a complete reconstruct of Randall Road from Wisconsin to South White Street. It's got sixty, you know, utilities from nineteen sixty-six and seventy-one respectively. And do a partial reconstructing that we don't need to do water or sewer. And the, the new utilities we have in the ground don't need replaced. Sewer will need to be extended two hundred feet, but that, or two hundred-ish feet. But that'll have to happen one way or the other, whether we're tacking it. So we, we need to, we need to evaluate whether or not we want to, to consider doing a rebuild to Randall Road or do we want to do a piece mail? Am I missing anything there Gareth?
Yeah, no, that, that sums it up quite well. We, we started there with kind of the patching on process. By the time we thought about what that would look like, with no sidewalk on the north side, all this additional development's going to add traffic, parking, walking to the school just from a safety and aesthetic and function perspective. You know, as Jared was about to say, well, let me say from strictly engineering perspective, it makes sense to completely reconstruct that street. Reconstruct the entire street as an urban section. When I say urban, just basically adding curb and getting here to the ditch and storm sewer and then adding those utilities that are, replacing those utilities that are older and adding those services through the main section. You could reuse the subgrade of that recently reconstructed road. It's all sub base and base course and everything that was used. You could go as far as doing a mill and overlay for the asphalt and salvaging some of that and save some costs. But just trying to visualize a, a half constructed, patched on urban street for this brand new development, I don't think anyone on either side, I don't think that's the right solution. I guess would be my recommendation, but ultimately, there are real dollars to reconstruct a thousand feet of street, even a shared portion of it, ways direction. But as they prepare to submit their site plan submittal, they need to know what assumptions to make and what to include in that submittal as they prepare that and are hoping to submit that. I believe in January was their anticipated plan, so. All of that makes sense. I'm happy to answer any questions or any go into any more, more detail on any of those elements.
Maybe if I can just rehash and then the board can. So we're gonna, there's gonna be a certain decision points or things that CNN is, for their site plan, they're gonna want board to weigh in on, you know, whether it's the width of the road or rollover curbs. But as far as what happens on the north side and how there's cuts or road, those things may not impact the site plan, right? There's certain things that they have to know for site plan. But other than that, they're gonna, would cutting into old sewer change anything with site plan or anything like?
No, all that would potentially change is how they probably handle the stormwater and drainage coming off of Randall Road and all of that likely heading to sort of the regional pond they would be proposing. But if they're only doing one side of the road and the north side's remaining ditched and no curb and gutter, in addition to, there's portions of Randall Road right now that are extremely flat. Most of it's got a pretty good break. But there's a couple of spots without storm, without curbing, are flatter than you would wanna put curb and gutter in. So they basically said, "We would need a letter from the village saying we would accept you to put in curb and gutter at a flatter than recommended slope, knowing that there's possibility for podding if the whole road's not reconstructed. But if they were to just use the existing profile of the road, there's segments of the road that are a little flat." So they need to know if we're reconstructing the whole road and what that profile looks like so that they can set their driveways and their homes according to where we figure the road will be on, on completion initially. So that's where the element of, they need an answer on that piece, I guess, sooner than later. As well as figuring out their financials for what that looks like and what they're responsible for and costs.
How far ahead was our, was redoing that in our plans? Like, you know, we have, you know, there's like the Truman, there's that area up there. What, where was, where would you put this on our plan to fix anyway?
Yeah, so that's something I've been working on this last week. I, I'm, actually this upcoming committee meeting, I would like the committee to work on this a little bit. But what I've been working on is we have kind of a smorgasbord of information on our roads, right? So you have water, sewer, curb and gutter, sidewalk, asphalt and storm sewer. But sometime, you know, McKinley has all of those elements new as of twenty nineteen slash twenty twenty. You can put it on the calendar. It all got, it was a complete reconstruction. Everything has the same dates on it. But we've got, Wisconsin is super fragmented as far as when different things happened on Wisconsin. Lots of streets are fragmented as far as what happened. Roosevelt Plum Birch, that's one that has historically been on our list as far as coming up next. We've talked about this over the last year or two, that that wasn't the next one on priority as far as I was concerned. The decking, the asphalt's holding up, the curb and gutter sidewalk are in good. The water, although undersized, has not had any failure. And we do have a sewer infiltration problem in one particular segment. But for the most part, that's a, it's a known problem. We're jetting it or cleaning it on an increased regularity. But the road itself is still holding up decent. But that road had water go in at one time and I think sewer came in after that. Then curb and gutter came in, then pavement. It's all been built in different segments. So both Liberty and Victory, the north halves are older, well, were older till we reconstructed half of it. Their utilities were older than the south half because they built out coming off of twelve. So you'll have, you know, the north half went in longer ago than the south half and then they put curb and gutter over everything at the same time or it's all been relayed. So there's just a complete smorgasbord between intersection to intersection of how old each portion of our roads are. So we have, we have a requirement to report our asphalt ratings. We do it through a program called Whizzler. But we have to go through every other year and rate our asphalt. So we'll go through and look at it and like, you know, there's a, it's a one through ten system and there's, you know, some check marks as far as how big the block cracking is. A brand new road's a ten, this thing belongs in a war torn city, it's a zero or a one. And everything in between, there's kind of some categories that you're supposed to be rating them. And in that system, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and all of the information in that every year it builds. We have to re-up the rating. But if I pull it up, you'll see that, you'll see something like Wisconsin from US twelve to McKinley or to Wilson or to, you know, whatever the streets, they, they've been broken up into segments. They're not always logical, but they're broken up into segments. And the pavement width is thirty-six feet, forty-five feet, forty-one feet, you know, whatever it is between this segment that there's curb and gutter sidewalk. All the information that's associated with the road. So as far as the decking itself, we actually have a pretty good repository of information that says it's easy to track. We can look at it, I can pull it off and say, here are my worst four roads. And we can, we can print that off and prioritize it and say, yep, McKinley or Miami's on my list, you know, a portion of pine. You know, but we can pull that off and I can say, okay, based on Whizzler, this is the worst road. But there's no way to track what's the worst utility, no existing way. There wasn't an existing spreadsheet formula that said, where, where's our worst water line? Where's our worst sewer line? What's the oldest storm or curb? So what I've been working on is just tacking on a series of columns that says, okay, for the road between, you know, for Wisconsin between Highway twelve and McKinley, when did that chunk of pipe go in? Okay, water went in in nineteen sixty-six and sewer went in in, you know, I'm making those up. I don't remember what Wisconsin is specifically. But we can have a little bit more of a comprehensive list. For instance, you know, Mike Wilhelm came in while we were talking about it. We were talking about some water breaks one day, it's like, oh, the Wraith redition, Truman Tyler, South White Street, that was called the Wraith redition, those blocks right there all went in in sixty-six-ish. They call that the Wraith redition. It's like, oh, that's, that stuff's not that old. What, what's really old is over here, you know, Liberty Victory area. You know, we've got that north section in there that's, that's old, that's what we ought to be replacing next. And I said, well, yeah, we just haven't had failures. Like, well, that's right. There really hasn't been a lot of failure over there by the Clean Biologist Station. We, we know it's old, but it hasn't failed. The utility is still holding up. So what I'm trying to do is to be able to put together as much information as we can so we can look at this. So, what I'm trying to do is to be able to put together as much information as we can, so we can look at this from a holistic standpoint and say? Utili- you know? The road on Roosevelt Plum, it's old. But it's holding up well, it's got good subbase, whatever it is, it's not seeing heavy traffic. That road is holding up well, the utilities are at least nineteen seventy-two, but they're holding up well. Whereas? The Wraith Edition, South White, Tyler, Truman, um? Randall here. That all went in at the same time, and it's not holding up well, the pavement on Randall is okay, the county's, uh, you know, redid that in ninety-six, I think it was. But the underlying utilities went in in that same nineteen sixty-six and we've? Been, I mean, we had four breaks on there last year. That utility is deteriorated. And that is my number one priority as far as the next place that I think we need to be rebuilding is the Wraith Edition, those? Those segments of street, but Tyler, Truman, that portion of South White, not all of South White, but the Wraith Edition portion of South White. And, um? And Randall Road. But what I, like, I guess that's a very long explanation for? I want the committee to help prioritize that and say, okay? We've, we, we see your data, yep, we see your recommendations, have you thought of this or are we concerned about that? And that we can have the board approve. Here's our, here's our five next projects, if we can afford, you know?
As we can afford.
We, we can't afford to do the projects as fast as we ought to be doing it, we just plain don't have the money. But, if we say, okay, as we can afford, when we're ready for it? These are, this is our priority list, we, you know? And not say that we couldn't move two to three or three to two or one to, you know? But this is a priority list, so that's what I'm hoping to, uh, get out of the board in the next couple of months is a? Is a prioritized, um, list, and obviously I'm trying to compile as much information and give my recommendations for that. But I think we're going to find that, uh, Wraith Edition is going to be either one or two, it's number one on mine, but I think it's gonna be either one or two? On our priority list as far as where we need to be spending money next. Um, as much as the utilities are rolling in Plum, Roosevelt.
Regardless of if a development was going in there or not?
You couldn't develop, but it's developed on both sides of the road.
But I mean?
Regardless.
Oh, yes, regardless of it's being developed, yeah.
What does it scale?
Um, if there was no development, we'd honestly be talking about doing, I, I would assume, and honestly, this was a conversation I had with Gareth when, um? We were talking about, you know, what, what do you guys see coming up in the next few years? Where, where do you anticipate the next projects? And I said, the entire Wraith Edition. I would think that you would start talking about doing? Tyler, Truman, South White and Randall all at the same time. Um, if there was no, you know, we might be two years down the road, you know, we might be further down the road, but I would have thought we'd have done that whole? Block at the same time.
White Street?
South White Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Although, that one is even more fragmented, a part of that can? That one's even more fragmented as far as when it got curbed, it was a gravel road down one side for a while, and had curb on one side, but not the other. So, yes, that, even with or without a development, I think that, that block is in our, um, one or two.
So, these sixteen cuts that need to be cut in? Or put in? Are they going there for residential lots?
Yep.
We're making, um, necessary plans for the other expansions for that stuff to go in at that time? So, we don't have to go back and recut or make additions?
Those sixteen cuts would be, so, we're talking about the stuff between Vern Meens and South White Street, right? The north side, well, Vern's lot could theoretically be subdivided and have an additional? He's got enough frontage for another lot in Vern's. And he actually has another set of utilities stubbed off into the north side of his. Firms is actually covered, it's to the south, if we're putting stuff at fifty foot, you know, we're talking a hundred foot for these twin homes. Those sixteen will have a, a stub for every home.
For eight homes, there'll be two, two per location, we'll say.
Yep.
Right, but my, my question is, is? As the roads and stuff go into that development, and there's potential for plans for phase two, three, four, five, whatever there ends up being? Down the road, are we making those? Installs? Now, at that time?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll stub the mains in, uh?
Right.
For their streets down the extension of Wisconsin.
So, does it make sense? I guess, does it make sense to come off, um, one of those streets with the main and then? Can we, can we bring the, those, um? Those items in through the backyard?
Can you? Yes.
Does it make sense, does it not make sense?
You already have water and sewer in Randall there, so you'd be running another?
We're gonna bend up running pipe down that direction anyways, because?
But we would only be on the backyard, because we have the ponds in the backyard, you don't have a lot of back-to-back lots.
Right.
So, you're gonna be running water and sewer for one side lots as opposed to two, you'd end up?
Well, you gotta remember, we haven't seen anything besides? Three lots right now, four lots right now.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, I don't know what, I mean, I did see a sketch of, but? I'm just asking questions that, you know, is there a?
And that's all going to be, that's? The plat, that they're trying to prepare this information for, that will show where the plats are, what, what is being reserved for utilities. I mean, that's what they're presenting or getting ready to present. We'll have all that information on it. But from what I've seen, it doesn't make any sense to try and put it in the backyard, we actually discussed that, or was the easement's going to be in the backyard?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking before we get into the point where we're spending lots of dollars for a street, that might not be the first street. Now, you're saying that's the area, but that might not be, I'm just, just asking, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just? As long as we're making due diligence to plan for what's best this first time? And then for the other additions, if and when they come. I don't? I guess I don't want to hear? Two years from now when we're ready to do a second addition or a second phase, and we're gonna cut into a street? Because we didn't plan?
Right.
We put in a, we put in a six-inch line, because that was the minimum standard and we should have had an eight-inch line.
Right, and we should have had an eight or a ten, I mean?
Absolutely.
That's what I'm talking about, is that we need to make sure we're, we're proactive on this, because we open plan that that? Development out there will have several phases to it over the next decade or whatever it is, maybe it's quicker, maybe it's slower? Depending on the world and the economy, but? We need to? And I don't, so, anyway, that's all I got to say.
So, I have a related question? If I may? To either of you? So, I'm asking out of ignorance? It sounds like we're talking about changing, changing the grade of the road? To some degree to maybe better match? If we're gonna put in curb and gutter and sidewalks, there's gonna be some gradation change. And I'm asking this out of ignorance? And maybe that's what you guys mean by pooling, like on the sidewalks and, and the, uh, aprons and that kind of stuff? Can't, can't the sidewalks and the curb and gutter go in? Once we get the stuff in the ground, who cares if we've got sixteen or thirty-two or a hundred cuts? You can run on that road, I, I just, I, I have seen developments where it took them five years to get? The, the finished decking on. You know, because they were just building like crazy and? The road would get ripped up and then they patch it, and they'd get ripped up and they'd patch it, and then finally, when all the houses were built? You, but the curb and gutter went in earlier in those cases, but? Like I said, I'm asking out of ignorance, because? Maybe it's just very difficult or more, or expensive to put the? Curb and the gutter and the sidewalk in, and then change the grade of the road at the end.
You would plan for the grade of the road and set that stuff?
Yeah, so, the issue is that the grade?
Is too flat.
Longitudinal from?
Yep.
Is, is too flat. Um, you need, the curb follows the center line, so you need to set that. Your curb goes in the same grade as the center of your road as you go, so you need to figure out what you're gonna set your center line to and all your curb matches that. If we were to set the curb for the final grade now, which you, you could do the design, try and work that, you might end up with some? Severely sloped or flat in the, in the cross-section view or in the, the road, the lane itself, where? In order to make it drain better, you had to raise or lower that curb and gutter, and now you have to make it up in the crown of the road and then?
Right.
Create problems there, it being too steep or too flat. And that's where their question was coming from, is we need, the developers going, we need to know what grade to set this curb at? Are we matching it to the existing road profile, or are we going to be redesigning, reconstructing the road profile?
Simple enough question, I guess, yep, so?
Furthermore, this is all owned by one developer, and he knows this is all in his face. So, whether you cut it, when you see those multiple cuts, it's, you know, we don't have these lots sold, we don't necessarily know. And you're moving further down the road.
They're all platted.
These are all platted, they'll know where they're at, they know where the property lines will be. So, whether you cut them in, there's actually an economy of scale of cutting them all in at once as opposed?
Sure.
To cutting them in and then coming back in six months or three months? And cutting them as you go down.
And the other piece, I guess, just from the back quick, separate of the utility discussion is? The, the function of the road and the increased traffic, parking and pedestrian spaces, it's not just the utilities driving this. This really, when this many houses get constructed in that area? Warrants from a, from a design perspective, being an urban street, not, not a rural street any longer, so? Would, my recommendation for the road? The road is actually driving it more than the utilities, and then we said, okay, how old are the utilities, what do the utilities need? The, the road and the way that should properly be engineered and constructed? Is driving my recommendation more than the utilities themselves.
The utility isn't looking at Chester and going, okay, we went ahead and cut into all of these, you know, we, we cut and patched into all these utilities. And now, in three years, when we're ready to do the Wraith Edition? We go, okay, we've got these utilities that are all nineteen sixty-six old, we go tear up that new road, we just put on Wraith there? And change utilities with them, and that's, that's where I was?
The mains are nineteen sixty-six.
The water mains are?
Yeah, or you don't replace them, you pour this brand-new road and then you get a water break, break year or two on the brand-new road, because? You decided to save the cost of replacing the water main.
Right.
And the water main that's sixty years old?
Well? Well, what else we? If we say the next, would say the next priority is? Tyler and White and what are you gonna go? Replace, replace all those and not replace the infrastructure on Randall, because you can just put top over it? And you not do it now and then do it in two years?
Right, that, that was my, that's the reason we're talking about doing utilities now.
The, the project itself is absolutely driving the priority of this, but that's why we have to have this discussion, I guess, recognizing the project's going forward.
How far down state can we go?
What do you mean by that?
Well, states brand-new to the end, or basically brand-new to the end.
Right.
You know, I, that's what? Part of my roundabout question was if we come in, because if we can come, just continue down south, it's all clear. And then just come in on a road wherever, if there is a road there? And then come back to the east, I don't know, I'm not?
We're not gonna be able to cut state itself, so, um?
Because it's a county road, or?
Because it's a new county road and? The, the current anticipation is to put a utility easement, so if you look at that, um? Lock we approved at seventy-five feet, not fifty feet, that first one? The current anticipation is to put a utility easement and to put the water and sewer down to that first road going south.
Down that side.
Down that side, not down the center.
Right, so, but, I mean, we have to cut across basically at a forty-five, we'll see. If we come off the end? Into that lot?
Yeah, this, they've already been stubbed out? And they come straight out, but yeah.
Okay, that's my question, is if it made sense as we went south to catch that road, if we went into the backyards? Instead of tearing that street up at this point?
With a new main?
With a brand-new main down that way. I don't know, it was just a question.
That doesn't help the sidewalk?
You would end up with mains, because you already have a main there, in both the front and backyards of single lots from a long-term maintenance of infrastructure? I would say that doesn't make a lot of sense, it is a, it would save you the cost of a street out of? You know, we, we aren't reconstructing that piece of main, for example, that main on that first block is brand-new, we're just proposing putting new? Lateral's in and then reconstructing the road, we're proposing new utilities for the block east of that only.
How much, what is, what's the going rate for a foot?
Of?
New utilities and road?
Full construction?
Full construct, water, sewer, street is probably in that? Six hundred to six hundred and fifty dollars a foot.
So, you're talking storm?
That includes storm, water, sewer, street, and gutter.
Talking three-quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah, we looked at some numbers, I assume that's what Jared's working at, as we took some preliminary numbers, and we looked at it as about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project? We looked at what portion of that would be driven by the developer having to do it anyway and taking that piece of it out? Being in the three hundred thousand dollar range? The village being responsible, obviously, for the balance then, that three fifty range, again, those are early numbers with contingency and quick numbers, so that's? Order of magnitude, what a, what a, what an early number would look like. Draw it out.
Yeah.
Well, they're setting this all up, can I ask a question?
Yes, I, I think the board, okay, if you want?
Yeah, no, okay.
How confident are we that the developer is going to continue developing beyond this initial stage? And as opposed to it end up being like Wonder Haven?
Let's, let's like Wonder Haven.
That whole area was built out and some houses were built and?
Empty?
Just empty roads.
We're very confident that the infrastructure we're currently talking about will be fully utilized, so what we're talking about is Randall itself. And we're very confident that that portion is gonna be built out. How fast they develop all the single-family dwellings going south? Um, there's a huge question mark, but we're not actually talking about laying infrastructure into that. Um, there is a portion that C and S, that they are, the developer is going to have to lay about four hundred feet of it going south on South White Street? That they are going to have to lay and is in their plans. That will be on them. But this actual Randall portion, we are very confident of that build out, it's? What, what happens in phase two or three? We have hopes. But we don't, we don't have any way to, we don't have any contractual obligations or?
Then it's not the village that's out? The?
It hasn't been built, nobody's out till it's built, I mean, we're out there, we're holding by, we own the land, but?
Right, but it's a different scenario than like Crystal Creek where? They just sat on that? Tap Street.
So? Crystal Creek probably should have been a couple different phases. But, a different developer had different? Financial resources, he could just go ahead and put it all in and sit on it, he didn't have to be motivated. Where these guys are much more motivated, they're willing, I believe they're willing to take off? Smaller bites much faster.
Yeah.
You know, buy and move, but build and move, build and move, build and move, where over there, we can just develop? Whatever that was, fifteen acres or whatever.
As a hayfield and? Well, and that was kind of the purpose of?
And we, and we learned a lot from? That project.
We did.
You, 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 unfortunately, you always learn more by your mistakes or your? Things that come apart than you will by the best planning sometimes, unfortunately.
We didn't want it to turn into that, which was, you know, that was kind of the? Set it up a little better.
That's why, as my understanding, nobody went forward and just sold the whole piece at once. It was kind of broken into blocks to? Get desirable for those things.
It is indeed.
So, what we're talking about is the reconstruct, so this is a state street, you get Wonder Haven's down here, the church is here? School is here, farm's here.
Yeah.
We're talking about the reconstruction of this segment? Of road, these, this two-block.
Well? Do you leave anything here?
We would leave the water and sewer for the western block.
The road, the top, the?
Uh, we would keep the base course and the sub-base, but in order to cut all those services in and reconstruct the street? We'd have to redo the surface and adjust grades.
Oh, you have to adjust this grade here because of this?
Well, we'd be, the grade may not have to adjust much there, but they're gonna? They're gonna build the, they're gonna rebuild the whole road. We're, we're talking curb and gutter on both sides and set that alignment, for the most, we will as much as possible try and match that first block to existing, but without getting into the design, or, and I say we, that?
You would have to?
Whoever, whomever does the design, yeah.
The asphalt is gonna come off? Here to here. Water line from here to here is in place. You can cut new services in. And sewer line from here to, in here somewhere, is in place. But we will have to, they will have to cut? The road and put in sewer to here? And then? Resurface.
Jared, the house on the corner? That one? Uh, is the sewer come out on Wisconsin?
Water and sewer both come out on Wisconsin.
Water and sewer on Wisconsin, okay.
From Wisconsin to White Street, this is where we have the nineteen sixty-six utilities.
Yep.
Or sixty-six for water and seventy-one, seventy-two, um?
Can you point where we ended with the new water? Yeah, okay, yep.
This portion right here, so what, what, what we anticipate seeing in the plat? Is we anticipate seeing sixteen? This portion right here. So what, what, what we anticipate seeing in the plan is we anticipate seeing sixteen, sixteen cuts from here to here.
Okay, we, I thought we had some sou- southern laterals already.
Three.
About a hundred foot, right?
We have three southern laterals right there.
Okay.
What we anticipate is seeing sixteen cuts from here to here.
Okay.
And then we're gonna see a road stubbed south for four hundred feet or four hundred and fifty. So this road that stands, stubbed south is what has to be sized correctly to be able to carry any additional, um, water and sewer needs over here. And we also anticipate a lateral coming south right here. So we've got sewer stubbed right here and water, I don't remember if we have water stubbed or if water is just tied. But water and sewer is gonna have to come down here and tie into a future street that's gonna come across. What we anticipate seeing, we don't, yeah, what, what we anticipate seeing, what we've seen in the preliminary drawings, we'll see, uh, water and sewer stubbed south so that we are planned out for the future. Now, well, what will be behind all of this is a regional retention pond, which means that if you were to put water and sewer on the backside here, you could serve each of these lots off the back. But you already have water and sewer on the front edge of the lots serving these homes and you have two separate lanes and each of those would only be able to serve one home. When you get, when you start seeing people talk about putting utilities in the backyard, you get something like this where they say, you don't have to do the cutting up this street and this street. Let's put the utilities back here and tie back and forth. You see that with gas and, uh, electric all the time. Not typically water and sewer. Water and sewer typically ends up under the street.
Yeah.
And gas and electric, uh, often, and telephone can oftentimes end up at the backyard.
You, that's because you use a lot smaller machines to put in gas and electric.
And it's public right of way versus a utility company right of way. Who owns the utilities also makes a difference, but yeah. Um, anyways. This right here is all this Rather, uh, this right here is all the Rather addition that I'm talking about, all having the same age of infrastructure and all failing. Had two breaks here, break here, break here, break here, um, in the last year.
So you did that three times and the one block in Wisconsin is newer or, or is it a figure eight?
It's just different. I won't tell you whether it's newer or older. This, the Rather addition came off of Wisconsin. It's actually probably older. It's just a different install. Um, they might, and this is where that spreadsheet comes in because you'll see this where they tied on to the initial and then they came back in nineteen eighty and replaced Wisconsin and tied on to existing. It's different. I'm not gonna say it's newer or older. I'll just tell you that this portion of Wisconsin is at a different age than this. This water line was extended in sixty-six, 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 um, and then they did some, uh, curb and gutter. They put sewer down. Um, I don't, I think they did sewer on these two first and then they did sewer on this one and then they brought sewer down to the parchway, then they put water and sewer through again. It was like, the Rather or Randall addition didn't all happen at the same time. It was very pieced in for the build out on that. But in general, all four of those streets are on our list of failing utilities with sufficient age to justify, um, future street expansion.
Can you, while you're standing there, point to what we're talking about in the end, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? That's just the two blocks, correct? Not the four hundred feet south?
Yeah, this is what we're talking about. This two block. This, this reconstruction is roughly a thousand feet from.
Yep.
From here to here. I think the one I measured was like a thousand twenty-seven.
Yeah, so the full reconstruct of that is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, regardless of what you, whether, which option you, let's say option, but regardless of whether you reconstruct the street or not, the requirements for the developer to put in curb and gutter, a wide lane, sidewalk, some storm sewer and their services totals that three hundred thousand kind of throughout that two blocks. It's not like a hard line here, a hard line there. It's, that's just, so it would have to be a developer agreement that would, with, with the developer ultimately, I suppose, would have to reach out how and who is, is reconstructing this essentially.
But the, the tacking on the extra eight feet curb, gutter, sidewalk, all the, those are happening one way or the other there. They, they, they have to pay for that one way or the other. It's just, do we rebuild or do we?
Do we reconstruct the rest at the same time?
Reconstruct the rest of the street or do we come back in a couple of years?
So we've quant, we've quantified that area, right? We've quantified that thousand feet earlier. You mentioned we need to go south. Basically, South White Street will extend how many feet south?
South White Street, I believe the.
Four hundred feet?
The developer will be doing that though.
The developer will be extending everything south, four hundred, four hundred and fifty.
That'd be internal to their development. They would construct it and then turn it over to the village.
Correct.
Upon completion. They still need approval for how they construct that to our standards.
So when we start talking about roll over curb or not roll over curb, that's, that's where they're requesting, um.
Yep.
The deviation is when we start talking about that four hundred feet or four fifty, whatever it is of new.
And so that risk of constructing a road that has no homes on either side of it, that's not a risk the village would, they, you would be reconstructing the one that doesn't have homes on the south side, I guess, but it's an existing road and existing utilities.
With at least four homes already started.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
So I think at least for me, I hear utilities, a good chunk of those utilities are past their useful life. It would be on, somewhere on the high end of our candidates to replace, right?
Yes.
We've, it's been brought to our attention with rec plan and this is our only place that doesn't have sidewalks. It's close to the school.
Almost.
Almost, almost, one of the only places, but a very high traffic place without a sidewalk.
A lot of people walk on them.
A lot of people walk down and why would you make a road up? Why would you do half a road?
There's a football field right there.
Up on top. We can't, like, off the screen.
Yeah, there's the playground. There's the, the trees in the back of the school right there.
That's the school. Okay.
So it seems like there's a number of reasons as to why you consider it. Is there any of the alternative viewpoint, any reasons maybe?
Well, the special assessments for deeds, you know, the.
Headed road.
Right, yeah. I mean, that would be the alternative, of course, you know.
So the special assessment. So the special assessment would be those houses on Randall.
So there's a couple of, I guess, a couple of arguments against it. Um, obviously the utilities are still in place. They're aged, but they are still in place. Um, and the developer can, can cut and tie into six inch, uh, iron pipe size and continue to develop south. And we can put sixteen individual cuts in there, um, and deteriorate the road and we can tack on the lanes. It, it, it is a possibility. Um.
Six inch pipe going into the new?
No, 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 just down Randall. There, there is six inch, there is six inch pipe in the back. It's ten inch between, uh, K and Wisconsin, but between Wisconsin and Y.
It's six.
There's some six inch pipe there. It could be tied on to. There will be drainage issues. There will be road decking issues. There will be grade issues.
Makes no sense.
Um, I, I, I don't think it, I don't think it makes a lot of sense, but when you start talking about.
Yeah, I know.
Six hundred foot dollars a foot and that, there is real implications to that. Um, it, the part where I, the wheel start to fall off on the, you know, hunted down the road to me really fall off is if you're gonna pay the, or the developer's gonna have to pay to go in and cut the road and patch the road and put in the service laterals, why did you not include that? You know, and then we have to rebuild it again in two years. The developer went in and paid all that money that we get to turn around and do again in three years or four years or five years.
Well, then we're gonna have to pay for it.
And then we're gonna have to pay for it. Um, now, I mean, can you imagine trying to special assess them for that in five years? We have brand new utilities, but, uh, you wanna special assess us for? And then your, your grades for sidewalk and center line and crown, um, on a, on a pieced in project would, would be some issue. Like, from an engineering standpoint, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense.
I, I apologize if this is rhetorical, but if this didn't happen, if we'd never bought the farm, ah, I bought the farm. And we were gonna do this, if we, if we were going to just repair Randall, Truman and Tyler, would you replace that? We're, we're, uh, and you're, you have in your mind, we're not, we're not doing a development. Would you replace that with a ten inch line?
I would ask my engineer very nicely to run a model, um, and pay for him to decide what he thinks his sizing is going to be for future expansion.
You'd still want, you'd still be thinking if that's the direction Falk or he's going if it's not in a project, you'd go, okay, that's the way we're gonna expand. What is the density? What is the number of residents? And was, is ten inch the right size?
I wouldn't look less than eight inch anywhere.
Yeah, six inch, we, I don't look at six inch anywhere. I, I mean.
You don't get fire flows out of six inch or more. It was the old standard, but it's been replaced.
Eight is the standard minimum, if you will.
Right.
Gareth, you, you, since you've only been with us for a short time, I mean, obviously huge into this project, but just looking at things, not knowing the history, not knowing previous public works directors and how they've worked, you know, what their priorities have been. Also assuming we didn't have the farm, looking at what we have going on here, what's your? I don't know.
Impression?
What's your impression? Like, what's, where do we need to focus our, again, assuming we don't have the farm?
No.
What, looking at our infrastructure and, and where priorities have been and what we have. I mean, you have sixty-year-old pipe in here.
Yeah. So what Jared's exercising, finding a way to document and overlay the different needs, asset management is really what, you know, he's kind of getting at there is understanding. Yeah, this may be the worst road in town, but it isn't necessarily the worst utility in town and figuring out and, and weighting those different priorities and understanding. I don't have a good handle on the details, but that's where I would be pointing you to look, saying, not just look at what role would that everyone complains about, everyone can see is the worst, but where is your most dire utility? Because you could, you know, you could, we, the solution is different depending on the problem, right? Here, like, you know, getting back to the question of downside, the, the risk is, is you, you just do the road surface, um, and put in curb and gutter and ignore the utilities and then something breaks and you're ripping up a brand new road or, or it's not, it's not, it's not sized properly and you're re-ripping it up. But, um, I have no reason to believe that, yeah, this is the, if this is the oldest utilities, that's where I guess I'd encourage to be looking. You can do other things with surface only on mill and overlays and replacement, but your big capital projects, I always encourage, you know, utilities. And if this is the area where it sounds like we've had some breaks, this sounds like the right area to be looking at. Whether or not this would be, if we were reconstructing the utilities under Randall, we would be looking at curb and gutter. Again, if that's the standard for a urban street and we are on the edge of urban town and recognizing that both White and Wisconsin have curb and gutter and sidewalk, I would be having the same conversation going someday you're gonna push development and I would encourage you to strongly consider curb and gutter regardless of whether development is going. Just because it is your kind of edge of town, um, street. Now, without the development, it makes more sense on the north and less sense on the south, but now in this case it's the opposite. But either way, it is a town and your standard is urban streets even on the edge of town. So I would say, you know, this is, from an, strictly from an engineering perspective, I mean, the downside's cost, right? I mean, if you want to have downside, that's, that's the, the challenge is coming up with cost. But from an engineering perspective, reconstructing it this way, now when you have the opportunity to split that cost, development is the right decision.
Thank you.
Yes.
So Jared, what do, or Gareth, what do we need now, like, two weeks or a month or, or is there a timeline?
We need, we need to know whether we're moving forward with a reconstruct or not. Um, if we decide we are moving forward with a reconstruct, it would be the second decision point of, is that something that we are, that we are going to do, that we are going to say, okay, um, we'll contract with our engineer to design it and put it out to bid? And then we'll charge the developer for their, um, their allocated share? Or do we do it like we're going to do the four hundred feet to the south in which the developer is responsible? They, um, don't go through government procurement sometimes. They can do things at a different rate than it costs us. Um, and they build it and then you take it over once it's done. Problem with that comes in when you start talking about special assessing the north side of the street, um, for something that's being done by a.
It's a county road for the middle twenty-four.
County road for the middle twenty-four. Um, there, there are some logistics in that, so although the pricing might be better, um, and I do need my, I, I can't, I can't speak to that. The pricing might, may or may not be better if the developer was doing it and certainly makes a lot of sense to have the developer do it. Um, where it's a reconstructive existing utilities and existing road, um. I think that we're probably going to want to, uh, run that project and then build it out back to the contractor. But that's, th- those are the two, those are the two questions. Are we going to reconstruct it? And if we are gonna reconstruct it, are we, are we beginning to roll the process for, um, you know, starting to look at, um, bit numbers or, you know, getting, getting numbers from our engineer? Uh, or are we saying, C and M, you, you guys get the numbers and come forward with a plan? Um, cause we are, we are very much so to the point that we need to be rolling with a option one way or the other.
What's gonna go, what's gonna be like the least amount of like hoops to jump through, red tape, like give us the most?
Problems one way or the other. There, there's, there's advantages and disadvantages both ways. But with it being, my, my concern is with it being a reconstructed and existing street, it's easy on the stuff that doesn't exist. We don't own it. It's not ours. After you build it according to our standards, we'll take ownership of it. It's, it's fairly cut and dried. But for something that, from, we do own the utilities. They are ours. Um, center twenty-four feet's not ours of the street. It belongs to the county. And if we are putting in new sidewalk or curb and gutter in homes that have never been assessed for it in the past, we're talking about special assessment for, um, curb and gutter for homes that have never been assessed for it in the past and can't really assess, um, I don't, I don't wanna say can't. I have not researched that specifically, but I could foresee some problems trying to special assess and then send money to a private developer for reconstructing a street. I, I could see there being some issues with that. I, I have not specifically researched it.
So if I understood correctly, because there isn't curb and sidewalk there now, those, uh, seven residences are responsible for a hundred percent of that?
First time, yep.
Okay, that's, that's a correct statement? It's not this split deal like we normally do on a reconstruction?
I would need to confirm that it's the same for sidewalk or, I know one, one or the other is a hundred percent, but I need to confirm that curb and gutter had sidewalk.
What I have an issue with is doing that. And it's, it's probably just a me issue, but we're gonna take those seven residents because the village decided to build to the south. We're gonna give you the whole bill for that. For something they didn't have a choice. And if it was there and it was a remodel or a redo, I, I get it, you know? Especially, I know you said you had some breaks in the area, all more to the north, but if those six or seven residents aren't having those issues, I know that's gonna leave a bad, it'd leave a bad taste in my mouth if I lived on that street and I've never had an issue since I lived there and now I'm covering a hundred percent of this.
Yeah, I, I.
So just, just hear me out for a second. I know it's probably the wrong way.
I'm sorry.
Just hear me out. Who owns the retention pond? When it's all said and done, who, who owns, who maintains the retention pond?
That is going to be submitted in the plan. We discussed that in our meeting and it's, works both ways. We do not currently have an established in our ordinance who owns it. Um, it's done different ways in different communities. Some communities require them to put a, essentially an HOA for owning their retention pond. And some of them turn them over to the community. I think the more common is that they're turned over to the community, but it, it does vary and we do.
That is my understanding that most of the time they turned over the community.
Yeah, but, but it does vary and we don't have an established procedure.
So, and again, just hear me out. If we own the retention pond in the backyard, we have easement and right of way.
Yes.
And we can connect the four hundred feet back to the state street line and make a loop.
You're talking for the utilities now again?
The utilities.
No, he's talking to us, right?
Well, I, but we were talking about curb and gutter. Right.
Right. We're digging up the street to set grade in utilities.
I would say we're also reconstructing the street.
Put in curb and gutter.
For separate of the, if the utilities were brand new, my recommendation to reconstruct the street as a.
But that is considerably cheaper to just reconstruct that street.
And no, and no impact to the resident, but the, the street is.
I just remember from, I just remember from the other bids, the sewer port, the sewer, water and sewer portion were always expensive compared to just reconstruction.
Yeah, you're right, it is.
But.
But that you're gonna go through and two years from now, replace the Randall road infrastructure anyway?
Chester, I apologize.
We're not saying that. It's usable right now. That we're saying the street needs to be moved.
No, we were just saying Truman and Tyler and White and Randall.
Right, which are all, all to the north.
It's the same age, the same.
It is, but you haven't had it, the point I'm saying is you got seven people there to pay for that thousand feet and they're not having any issues. and they're not having any issues today. It's very easy to sell when you're like, hey, you know, the water main broke in front of your house. Hey, you know, we're always cleaning the sewer in front of your house. We don't want sewage to go in your basement when it backs up. Those things are easy to sell. I'm not saying I'm against doing it the way that's being proposed. I'm just saying, we should look at everything because we should.
The cost to the homeowner of not doing utilities would not change though.
Because they're paying a hundred percent.
But they're only paying a hundred percent on the curb, gutter and sidewalk.
Not the utilities.
Not the utilities, and, and they would pay a portion.
They will get fifty, what is their portion for that? Cause they'll get their half.
For reconstruction?
For recon, they'll get their portion for the reconstruction of the water and sewer and the road also. And they'll pay a hundred percent for the curb and gutter.
So here's the, here's the counter side.
Am I wrong?
No, you're not, you're, you're.
Yes and no, because Vern won't get, won't get that, because that, that line to, uh, to Wisconsin is brand new.
The western two won't.
The, the western two won't get.
So we're talking just the five then?
The five are gonna get both water and sewer.
Curb and gutter.
And storm.
But Vern will be upset because he's got twice the lot, as far as length of sidewalk and curb and gutter.
Well, I'm, Vern could still sell part of it if you wanted.
You also have a giant yard, and that was your.
The, the backside of this, or the part of the, um, you also have to be careful of is if we were to say, you know what? The neighbors to the south are doing it, a lot of kids walk on this sidewalk, whatever it is, we think the village ought to contribute to a portion of the sidewalk or curb, you know, whatever it is. As of yet, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what, the way I understand it, when the sidewalk and curb has gone in for the first time in front of your house or in front of any other house, it all had to be paid owner upfront the first time. And it's not that this street doesn't justify sidewalk in front of them. They, I mean, they are an urban section, and they haven't had to pay for it in the past. Whereas every other homeowner in Fall Creek has had to pay for curb and gutter and sidewalk, or their previous, or the developer. But all that curb and gutter sidewalk was all had to be paid for a hundred percent the first time. Now, I'm not saying that's right, and I, I honestly, I, I just wanna present the information to you, I don't wanna make this decision.
And you understand that when you're buying that new place with the new curb and gutter.
Yeah. I don't wanna make this decision. That's why you guys are like, I'm just trying to give you guys the information. I, I, I'm not trying to say it one way or the other.
My understanding is that the first time for the sidewalk curb gutter, that that would be a hundred percent, cause it's the first time.
Right.
But reconstruction.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent of the street, but the village pays one hundred percent of the storm, sanitary and water for reconstruction. And since they're already served by water and sewer, it's a reconstruction for those things.
Yep.
But.
So they're only gonna have to pay a hundred percent?
Fifty percent of the reconstruction of a curb and gutter.
Fifty percent of the road, a hundred percent of the curb and gutter.
Cause the sidewalk hasn't been in yet.
Got it.
But the road's already in, so only fifty percent of the road, fifty percent of half of the road, cause the road is split.
But yeah.
Anyways, we can move on.
I, I'm not, I, I, I don't disagree with you as far as the concern that residents are gonna have, cause that's, that honestly is the, when we start talking about this, it's easy to say that this is what needs to happen. Um, I can, I can give you a list of lots of utilities that need to happen. But there's a difference between needing to happen and wanting to be able to sit here and look somebody in the face and say, yes, we are special assessing you, or yes, we are raising your taxes, or yes, we are raising your water rates, or yes, we are spending money that we aren't spending on something else to do this, and this is why. You're, you're a hundred percent right in that you have to be able to justify it, but.
Ultimately though, ultimately, everybody pays. When we moved here, not only did I buy a house, the previous owner didn't pay anything. That's when I met Renee. And it was sixty-seven or sixty-eight hundred dollars.
That's a unique, that's a unique spending for you.
I'm just saying that, uh, that we do have to pay. I suppose I could've lived, could've lived there when Highway twelve was being done, and I could've argued with the state, well, I don't wanna sidewalk. Or argued with the village, I don't wanna sidewalk, I don't wanna curb. I totally get it.
I believe the project will be split, and it will be considered for special assessments, the parts that are reconstruction and the parts that are new construction. And we have had projects like that in the past where one parcel has both reconstruction and new construction. So the utilities would not be assessed, but the sidewalk, curb and gutter and half of the street would be.
Did McKinley, didn't the residents have assessments of water and sewer too?
Well, uh, I don't, off the top of my head, I can look, but I'm looking at the ordinance right now.
But I don't.
And I'll pull it out.
Do you generally, do you generally wait until things fail and then say you, then it's replacement? Or are you, and only then is it that you replace things? Is that what you're saying? And that's how you do projects?
We've always, in my experience, we've always been chasing the ball.
So when you did McKinley, was it that there was?
There was, there was issues, there was issues and stuff going on, and then it needed to be done.
And to Chester's point, everybody, and I, I won't speak to that, those north five houses. But to Chester's point, Truman and Tyler, no, there's a reconstruct coming. And honestly, I, anybody who's asked me on the, anybody who's asked me, I've said, it's the entire Raythor Divid, you know, cause people ask, it's like, do we need to be planning for a special assessment? Is this coming at some point? I can't speak to how, who I was told that to, I don't remember. But I have had a few of those questions, you know, there out of water, again, like, are, are they getting ready to reconstruct this street? Or am I gonna be paying for this? Because people aren't dumb when they have their waters out for the third time.
So the next question is, if we do Randall, do we just jump into the other two then? And then we say the Raythor, you know, this all came together at the same time?
We would have to, uh, be moving the ball very, very quickly to do that. We haven't done any engineering. But you're not wrong, is that when I, what, what we did talk about originally is doing those four segments of the street all at the same time. We're talking about moving this up, um, and there might be a palatability of, you know what, if we were rebuilding, we're, we're redoing the whole block, and yeah, we know that you, you specifically have not had, well, they've had the water outages. They haven't had the cat in front of their house, but their water has been turned out with everybody else. They know the water breaks exist, they know their infrastructure is old, the same as everybody else. There might be some palatability there. There would be some issues with trying to get stuff designed, and, I mean, there, there could be some issues in that. But, but yeah, the, all my arguments for replacing Randall are the same for Truman and Tyler and South White Street as far as age of utilities. And honestly, the road decking is significantly more deteriorated, um, on South White Street. If you go look, go drive down South White Street, look at the block cracking, the longitude of the cracking, it's.
Is the board okay? Wesley's got his hand up. Yep, good.
This might be a dumb question, but can we push any of these costs at all to the developers that are on the other side of that street?
Yeah.
I, I think Renee was, that's what she was saying, that assessments have been different for new construction on one side of the road and reconstruction on the other side of the road, where that might be different. What, how much of that's the way that is, that, that's one possibility, but.
So what I was meaning with my comment is you can have one parcel, and so, okay, like a state of some property, that parcel had some aspects that were new construction and some aspects that were reconstruction. And as far as the developer does pay half, I mean, they will be paying, like the road, they'll be paying that side of the road. The, what is in front of the property only goes to the central line.
I, if I'm understanding your question, your question is, could you say, your, your development's driving reconstruction of Randall Road, developer paid for reconstructing the whole thing? Sidewalk, curb and gutter, everything both sides, because your development's driving this? I mean, can, can you say it and ask them to try and agree to that development agreement?
We could say it.
Absolutely. Are they gonna walk at that point? Who knows, but yes, that's, I mean, that's, that's where he's going. And you absolutely can.
And then build that.
Right, they would just say, we'll cut it to existing, whatever they're.
Split this with the developer, is why it's the, the.
You and the special assessments, that's the only thing.
But, yes. Can we recognize Jamie Kating, please, on, on the Zoom? And let him in, Tim, perhaps unmute him?
I'm unmuted, if you guys, can you guys hear me?
Here we go.
Um, I'm about six points behind here, cause I just couldn't jump in that easy. But I wanted to point out that I'm, in, uh, two thousand eighteen or nineteen, we did have a water main failure at the intersection of White and Randall already. Um, I don't, I don't know if Jared's aware of that one or not. Uh, but right in that intersection, we have repaired that water main once, we had to dig up and fix. So, kinda goes back to what Chester had said about the, the mains, you know, the problems we'd had. So I just wanna make sure you guys knew that, that we've had a failure on Randall as well.
Thank you.
Our line ends at Randall and White, right?
That's correct.
It doesn't go to the farm.
Your utility line or your corporate line?
Utility lines.
Utility lines, and there you go. The thought is we would stub out the mains to the south edge of the right-of-way if they were to extend down the road to possibly extend utilities in the future without having to reconstruct further east down Randall.
And the reason you would extend to the south side of the road there is that there's not likely to be development on the north side in the school football field. So running down the center, typically we run down the center, so you can develop either side. But in that particular segment, there's highly unlikely to see a development in the football field.
Does the school pick up the east portion of South White Street if it were redone? Or does the village pick up?
School.
Okay. Still, you got only four houses there.
Five now.
So if you're on the corner, you're paying, and, and we did Tyler, White, Truman, Randall, and you live on a corner house there, are those?
You only get paid for one side.
Oh, is that?
The village picks up the other one.
Okay.
Your address side correct?
Gotcha.
Yeah, but I can't confirm that one.
It's okay, word.
We've changed the corner lots, but I can't remember.
My last, my last recollection was that if you lived on the corner, we designed it so you would only pay for the side you had your address faced.
Corner lots of credit will be given to property owners with corner lots and the amount of fifty percent of the linear footage of the short side of the lot. That was April eighth of two thousand nineteen. And what I'm able to quickly find, Tim, is I don't think that there were water assessments on McKinley Water or Sewer, it was just a street.
It was just a street?
Right.
Cause it was reconstruction? Those must be reconstructions?
Reconstruction, yes.
Yeah. But I'm just quickly looking, you know, but.
Yeah, I, I think looking on assessment is, 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 is a piece, right? We've talked about that, but I think you still have utility costs and when you wanna replace things. If you do assessments different, that's fine, the village pays for it, and eventually, everybody pays for utility costs and fees.
Yep.
So then you start looking at like, what's the most cost-effective thing for a project? That's where I would look at it, like, is it most cost-effective to do all this right now? Or wait two years and then do it now? Can somebody show me that, what the difference potentially would be there? And then you can start dabbling in, do we, do we not like the way we do assessments? And try to control that, and for some reason, but you gotta be careful in there, you know, and how you do special one-offs for individuals, cause everything you do now is pretty much how you're gonna go forward with assessments.
I will say that the costs haven't gotten any cheaper over the last couple of years. When we started, um, talking about, when I first came here, was, first started talking about development, we were talking to five, to, you know, five twenty-five linear foot for reconstruct, for new.
I'm not different than anybody else here, and it's hard to talk, well, it's one of the harder things you have to do as a board, is to talk about assessments and parking.
The joke is for a reason. If you wanna fill the village hall, talk about special assessment.
It's a very unpleasant thing, but costs come somewhere, right? Either it's everybody, everybody's paying utility fees and.
How soon after, if we, um, would Truman and Tyler be able to? You mentioned like, we'd have to move quick, like, what, what do you mean by?
Quick.
That?
Originally, we had talked about, um, well, it, none of this matters, none of this has been approved by a board, none of the timelines that, uh, Gareth and I had talked about, none, none of this has been so much as approved in a capital, uh, project plan. It's not, it's all in the back of our heads.
Yeah.
So what we would've done is really irrelevant. We talked about trying to, uh, to work on, uh, funding accu, or funding options this year, potentially doing design next winter, trying to do construction in the summer of, you know, the following summer, um, would be the, would've been the faster method.
So twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, depending on which way you did it, but, um, obviously, things change.
And the ideal time to bidding is frankly, out.
Right, right.
You know.
Yep. Nine days ago.
Kinda, yeah.
So if, if we pounded this out through the year, the board pounded it out through the year, then January one of twenty twenty-four is probably the day it should go out for bid. Is that what we're saying? Or i- in, in your mind, were you hoping that, that we could accomplish it?
I don't necessarily have a, um, how I think this ought to go. I, my idea here is to present the information, we'll let the board make the decision, this is your decision.
Well, they're gonna be, they, they're able to make the tie-ins now on the first couple.
Well, yes, so they can, the.
They're building.
They're looking to put forward a plat for approval, that's gonna say, where are we gonna set stuff? And if we want to try and push that back and say, yes, we're going to approve the plat, we'll, we'll divide it out, and we're saying the curb, you know, we're gonna set an elevation, and we're gonna give you a center line. And that's what we want you to build, anything you do in the meantime on, and we're gonna go in and put in cuts into the road, and they're gonna have patches on them, and we're gonna push it out.
But they're gonna end up making a cut now anyways.
Yes.
Because we have four going in.
And there's one, one or two laterals, I don't remember what side that's on, but they, yes, they're gonna end up making a cut.
Cuts now anyways.
Yes, they are. And are they putting a temporary patch on it, and, you know, just saying, yep, we're gonna cut that road?
Well, that's gonna make a difference, because should we just let them cut it in and gravel it? If we're coming behind it later this year to do it.
That's, exactly. It, it makes a difference if, if they're, if they're trying to patch the road, or if we're gonna say, you know what, we are gonna redo this.
Do we, you know, more like, are we requiring them to repatch the road? Or are we gonna be coming behind them doing this project?
The separate piece out there is we ask them to confirm with the county, and the county's gonna require them to do actually with the road.
Right, cause they're gonna tell us.
So I'm waiting in your back for now, but the county may not be okay with that.
Yep, I forgot about that.
With the patching you're talking about?
With, if they were to, what, what? Usually I would say the patch has to go at least a lane, and I would think the county, you're not gonna stop in middle of the lane. They have to all the way to whatever the lane.
Have you driven anywhere in Eau Claire County at all?
But basically, my, I, I put it to them, I said, regardless of what route we, we go down, even for these first ones, you, I, I tasked it to the, the developer, and I figured out what the county's gonna require them to do as far as patching and repairing the road for any patches. Then we sort of got to this discussion of what is the long-term plan for the road? And that's kinda where we went, we gotta have that discussion before I can answer that for you, as their engineer.
Wild speculation. You don't want to hear. What is the cost differential if we do the patches now? And then next year or two years from now? Pull the whole thing and put the new piping and, and all the, all the stuff in two years?
The problem isn't necessarily the patching in and of itself.
Yep.
So we're gonna require them to go in and back to this grade issue, right?
Yep.
That we've got to establish a grade, and I suppose we could, and I don't know this, but I suppose we could do a preliminary engineering and establish grade, but then you've got to tack on eight feet on the south side of this road. Um, and you've got to, you've got to piecemeal it.
Okay.
And then you're gonna come in and be digging that up, and I think another part we're gonna have to consider here is the developer isn't going to want to have a gravel, uh, trying to sell.
Probably not.
They're not gonna be trying to sell.
Yep.
Homes in their new development in a war zone.
They're gonna want a finished road.
The other, you, to that point, you could, you could build them all and then on your schedule, reconstruct Randall, but in its current configuration as a rural street, you would need to put culverts in all these driveways and then set these driveways, the developer or the village, someone's going to have to come in, pay to reconstruct all those driveways and remove all those culverts when you come in, put the curb and gutter in later.
Yeah.
If you were to say skip the cul, the curb and gutter and everything from now on, on that front of it, just to get them moving forward and us moving forward in our own pace, that would be the imp, the fight.
And at that point, we would lose the half from the developer.
You'd be paying for.
Yep.
Yeah, we.
And then we really would be asking.
Everybody for.
Yeah.
And then you'd assess them for their side as well at that time, but you'd still be assessing the north side at that time, and, yeah, it's a unfortunate opportunity, cornering sort of being dealt to make this decision in. Because their goal is to plat these and build these this spring.
Is this something that finance and personnel are, are looking at a little closer in committee, um, or what?
I think in general, we need a direction, so plan the plat, if, if we give them a direction and say, yes, we plan on reconstructing the street, not to say that this is this is the time, not to say that we've got all the details laid out, but if we say, yes, we think, or yes, we're planning on reconstructing the street, um, then that gives them a, a direction to go with, with their platting. If we say no, or if we don't plan on reconstructing the street, we plan on leaving it as a rural, um, street and putting culverts and patches, if the county will even allow that, which there's a question mark if the county will even allow that, but if the county will even allow that, um, then that gets.
Well, the county, because it's in the municipality, well, the county must allow the driveways that close on the county road?
Um, they were checking into that, but our preliminary, uh, conversations were, yeah, that the twenty-four foot driveways, um, that they have, they have them for each building back to back, so they have twenty-four and split driveways, but the preliminary indication is yes, the driveways are not a concern.
So when do they need to know about moving forward, like, the plan yesterday, probably, or what?
That's what they were hoping we were gonna tell them in the meeting that they sat down, Gareth and I sat down and said, I'm, I'm not making that decision, uh, that's, that, that's you guys.
As of right now, the direction they are heading is they're gonna do the minimum required on their side of the street, which is saw cut the whole length of the road, scab on eight feet, put curb and gutter and sidewalk at the existing road grade on their side. That's, it wasn't a formal direction, but that's kind of what they said, well, that's what, you're telling us we need curb and gutter on the sidewalk on our side, that's what that would look like. Now, separate of that, we said we gotta have a conversation, Jared and I, before we give you any formal direction, but they were hoping to submit for a January Plan Commission meeting what they're proposing to construct out here. Again, that's what they're proposing as the development, it's not, that doesn't have to be your schedule, that's their schedule.
And I suppose I still can submit that as a developer, but ultimately, we're gonna have to be able to think about internalizing, decide whether or not we are, we are comfortable reconstructing the street or if we're comfortable, um, piecing milling it.
So we're looking for a recommendation, a motion, are we bringing this to committee and coming back?
I think at minimum, we need a settlement, what the, what the general idea is, I don't think we necessarily need a formal, this is what we're doing, because you guys need to be able to internalize, you need to be able to go think about it. Um, you need to be able to research on, do whatever you need to do, but I, just a general idea that, are we, are we changing the direction that they have right now? Right now, they are gonna submit a plan that set, or a proposal in their plat that says we are gonna tack on a south lane, we're gonna cut sixteen individual cuts, and we're going to ask the village to give us a letter that says we recognize that the center line of this road does not line up and it doesn't match, curb doesn't match, or center line doesn't match curb.
How much is it gonna cost if they have to replat, redo it?
They're not gonna, so what, the, the way this works is they're gonna submit a plat to, um, Planning Commission, Planning Commission is gonna review it, make any changes or any recommendation, anything they want. Through final plating, then the village board will make the final approval of yes or no, actually, we want to see what, whatever it is I got.
So it's just time?
Yeah.
And developer, good graces and finance, I guess, I mean, they're, if they have to redesign it, obviously, they're paying an engineer to redesign it.
Right.
Well, I agree, that's probably the right way to do it, but I'd like to see numbers what it's gonna cost. And how we're paying for it.
You would like to see a more formal proposal of what?
And I would like, you know, we're saying six hundred and fifty, we divide it in half, and then where, where's, what's the breakdown gonna be? What, what portion is the residents picking up, what portions the rest of the village picking up? I'd just like to see some numbers, I mean, they don't have to be the exact penny, but.
And we're talking for Wisconsin to South White Street?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I agree, it, it seems like the right.
I can't, I can't get behind anything without a number, not on, I just.
Well, I, I don't, I don't need you to, I, yeah.
It, it makes sense to redo the road.
Yes.
If it's within grasp, I guess. And makes sense, but.
So what information do you want us to prepare for you, because we can, we can give you any information, I mean, all things with time and money, right? Um, but I do want to make sure, I mean, this isn't a decision, somebody's not gonna like it, somebody's gonna, no, it doesn't matter how you make this, it doesn't matter what this is. Somebody's gonna say you've made a wrong decision because you did this, or somebody's gonna say you made a wrong decision because you didn't, I mean, one way or another, somebody's gonna be mad at this, so you guys have to be comfortable in your votes and making sure that you made the decision with the best information you had. So I want to make sure that I'm giving you whatever information that is, so we can try and get some.
So I would like to see numbers on a reconstruction of the road for utilities and the road built to the width and the specs that it needs to be for the driveways and the laterals that need to go in, I wanna see the total cost.
And the breakdown.
And the breakdown.
Okay, anything else that we're looking for?
In comparison to just doing the utility or just doing the road?
Doing it at one time, don't redo it, right?
But if we only have the numbers for the whole reconstruction, then how do we compare that to?
We don't. Cut it.
We don't really have a cost the other way.
Correct.
Because it all goes to the, it all goes there, but it's not gonna be right.
It's the developer.
And we're gonna probably have to come back at some point, two years, five years, ten years, and dig it up again.
Right, and then it's all.
But.
Yeah. Yeah, so, the, I need that other piece, I think, too, the hypothetical, like, if we're deciding, like, we don't wanna do it now.
What could that look like?
Yeah, what's the road gonna look like now, how do we, you know, what's, what are the side effects of, you know?
But I thought.
What are we losing now that developer would cover?
What's the opportunity cost here?
Yeah, what is the opportunity cost we're losing now?
I thought it was more than that, though. Because I asked the question about the grade.
Well, that's what I was just saying, the grading, you know, how do you fix a grading later, what do we gotta do with that?
Right, in two years or five years.
We're, we're on the schedule for Truman, why are we, why would we not do this with Truman, or whatever the roads are then, you know, and then if we're just gonna do it then? What are we losing now, like, that opportunity cost on that? But I, I like to see the schedule breakdown, but the other side of it is, gosh, if we don't do it now, then, then we're really gonna look bad, because we're just coming back and redoing it, just like you said before, about if you didn't put some.
Just need some information so I can answer questions, and so far, we've.
This is the first anybody's seen of it, and that's not, and that's not problematic, but we do need some general idea what, and I'm, I'm happy to, I'll, we'll work with Gareth and try and get you, uh.
So can we have that comparison that Sheena was asking for, too? Because I'm interested in that, just what, what is the cut-in cost? You know, if we, and, and then they do their portion and we do nothing.
All right, that's the cut-in portion with the, with the lane extension.
Yeah, basically.
So ideally, so what I've estimated right now, and it's very informative, but I've got total project, water sewer, storm street, total. Then I have the development cost, same breakdown. Basically, what I, what I would suggest would be their portion for doing the eight feet of street, the utility services, those things, you know, their portion of it, and then the net negative, like, you know, so there's, there's sort of my early summary table, again, it's preliminary, but, and there's, you know, there's a lot of assumptions in it, but that's kind of, as I'm hearing, it's sort of the breakdown you're looking for, it's, it's been done as Jared and I have looked through, but.
How about this, can I get a motion from somebody to kind of pursue with the, the goal of going with this as a project, but then start, kick this to committee? Kick this to committee, yeah, at least to start with those things we're talking about, to start looking at them. Like, even this Thursday, well, let's see what we can get for numbers, and then, you know.
These are not, these, these numbers are great.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Yeah. Start looking on Thursday at these numbers, too. Or you can send them, you can send them out, push them out, and then.
No, I, I can shoot you guys this, I'll, I'll forward you this right now.
I was gonna say, yes.
Send it so that we can look at it, so we're not just discussing it right here, I wanna look at this.
I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll forward, I'll forward you this, uh, that, that's not a problem, um, we'll see what honestly, what I was thinking we'd do is see if I can try and figure it out on, uh, an assessment on a village, because what this has is a village versus developer split down. And Renee and I will spend a little bit of time in the morning trying to see where we're at, make sure that we're
Right, and that.
Using current ordinance, not what we were in two thousand eighteen, or, you know, because honestly, with McKinley, it did change some. And we wanna make sure that, that we're not giving you two thousand eighteen's information versus today's information. Um, but we will try and get you some better numbers, and let's talk about it in committee, but, I mean, this is, I, we'll try and have some better numbers for you tomorrow, I mean.
Perfect.
I'll try and give you these numbers tomorrow, and we'll, we'll look at it a little bit more, I don't wanna speak for anybody else's schedule, so.
Yeah.
We'll try and get you some more information as well, because, it's like you say, you need to be able to internalize it, this nobody's gonna be happy, whatever the choice is, so you've gotta be able to justify that, you know, what, we looked at it, we researched it, and this is what we came up with, and this is why.
So I, I think there was a motion that, or thinking is a full rebuild, but we need more information. So that's kind of a, you know, a guidance given to, to staff there, but the things we, you know, we talked about, cost and split, sort of, we have there, you know, the opportunity cost law, you know, opportunity cost, we don't do it, and I think the other thing was that more asset management, you know, I think that probably helps with that, that opportunity cost, too, but anyway, the material with that, does that make sense to guys? And then start with committee at that, we'll send, send out what they have, and then start on Thursday, looking at some things with them. Is there a second to that?
That did.
That did, okay. So we motioned a second, and that, did, did you get that, Renee? Is everybody okay?
I didn't really understand the motion, because what you said at the beginning is that we're going forward with a full reconstruct, that's what.
I think that was the guide, uh, the motion was give the guidance to that.
What would that look like as a plan?
To give the guidance to them for the plat.
We're not saying do it.
That's, I was gonna say, I'm not saying do it.
Not even for the plat, for us to be getting you information with that in our.
For staff guidance.
For the staff to give us information, yes, okay, not that we're gonna go do a full rebuild and we're making some decisions, okay, I wanna make clear on that.
To just get the information on the cost.
Just to get the information for the cost of what a full reconstruct.
As if, as if we were doing, as if we were doing it as the engineers proposed, do a, doing the project, right?
Yes.
For East Jackson?
Basically, the staff guidance, like I was trying to say, was to get the material, like, we think it's the right thing.
Yeah, can you flatten the grade?
But we need the cost and what, and then the.
There's so much crown in front of my house that my driveway's today on steam.
We wanna make sure.
So motion, anybody else, questions, comments on that? We're not really spending money, anything, and we're just getting guidance, so this, uh, yeah.
Just a break.
So, all, all in favor, all in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposing? Okay, so you'll see this, this, uh, there will be material coming out, and then we'll have this on, uh, like, a whole business, whatever, for Thursday to start talking about some parts of it, whether it's asset management or these numbers or whatever. Anything else? Does anybody wanna start thinking about the other part of it, too, your discussions on, uh, assessments? You should start reading up on material on that, everybody, because it's, you need to be prepared and know what that's like, so if you have an opinion on that. Because, and it's not just now, but it's in the future, and how we, how we do that, so. Well, there's a fair amount of material that we have, but there's a fair amount of material out of the state statute as well with that.
The League has a pretty good publication on it as well.
The what does?
The League of Municipalities on special assessments, they have a pretty good publication.
Okay.
Okay. Thirteen B, consider amendments to the twenty twenty-two budget, and this was talked about a little bit before.
Yeah, this is just memorializing what we've already done, we had board motion, so we took, you remember back in was it February, when we agreed to pay off the Rather Farm, um, we paid it up out of Capital Projects Fund, and we structured it in such a way that we could pay that money back to Capital Projects Fund. So, I mean, technically, what we did with the cash is we took money out of Capital Projects Fund and put it into general fund, and we took money out of general fund and put it into debt service fund and wrote the check out of debt service fund to pay the loan. Just the, physically, how we transfer the money internally. But we don't have a budget to do that, because we weren't planning on doing that prior. We had the money, we had the cash and the ability to do it, but it was never reflected in our general fund budget, in our debt service budget, in our, um, Capital Projects budget. So, um, as we're closing out the year, we need to do a budget amendment that, that says that memorializes that we had zero money from transfer from other funds, and we're putting it at five hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred dollars. Um, it's as outlined here, but we're just memorializing that we do it back.
Where, where is it?
That's on C, right? It's in C.
It's on C, okay.
It's on C, it's not on B.
I mean, I can, we can talk about this forever, but it's
Yep.
Pretty time dry.
So there's no resolution number or anything, it's just this, you know, number.
It's an amended budget, so after, if you approve it, then we'll have to advertise in the paper and send a notice, but it's, it's an amended budget, so you guys have to approve it.
Okay, so we just be looking for a motion to amend the budget per thirteen C here? Our guess, our.
Well, I know, but it's thirteen.
Oh, do I, oh, would I? That's why you're doing that, I covered. Sorry, then I covered the brand.
Fine, on the agenda, it's B.
It's B.
It's just saying.
On the agenda, but it's C.
I'm like, what?
It's B on the agenda, but it's C on the packet.
Motion approved.
Okay, I got a motion, motion in a second to approve the budget amendment as described here in this spreadsheet from thirteen C for Agenda M thirteen B.
And C.
Any comments or questions?
Sorry.
All right, we'll do a couple, please.
I will. Heard.
Did you say heard or herbison?
Heard.
Yes.
Conns.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Herbison.
Yes.
Okay, uh, open.
No, we don't.
Book and board review dates.
Yeah, because I went over there, we don't have.
You overrode it, so I don't know what the dates are anymore. But I'll actually look those up, because we wanna get them right, please.
We do, sorry.
And the board of review is just a finance committee that have to be there, right?
I think that's the personnel, like, the five that are on there.
Economic Development?
It's the Economic Development Personnel Committee, it's those people that have to be there.
Yeah, the Economic Development Personnel. Yeah. Is it a?
So we have to set the date for open book and board review, open book just has to be Randy.
Yep. Yeah, Proctor is here for that, and then, uh, the, the June date for.
Or somebody wants to come complain, or.
Yeah, is it, is it a quorum of board members or a quorum of the?
Board review, so, uh, she sits on the board review, I sit on the board review.
You'll be there?
Five. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, numbers, a numbers game is what I'm looking for, yeah. Just so everybody's clear that.
Couple people from the board, the president.
Yeah, Karen's on the, from the personnel, from the personal finance.
Personal finance.
So you're on that committee. Karen's on that committee, Ryan, I think, is on that committee.
Ryan is on there, yeah.
I'll bet you Colin wants it.
Colin, you're looking like you want to.
Oh, yeah.
I've been to, just eat donuts.
I'm gonna have half a one, hey? Hope somebody. I'm not going home with them, so somebody's gotta eat. So this is from Randy, there's a letter, the dates, he, somebody wanna make the motion? Here, Karen, you want a motion? Here, Karen, the dates are right there.
Yep, the dates are Thursday, April the thirteenth for open book, two thirty to four thirty, board review, Wednesday, May thirty-first, from five to seven is what Randy Proctor from the assessing May third corporation is recommending, or he'd like to schedule those dates.
Are you making a motion for those dates?
I can make that motion, I'm not, I don't have to be there, so it's up to you guys.
I'm gonna second that, because I don't have to be there.
Does it have a time?
I'll second.
Does it have a time on there?
Yeah, he has a time, two thirty to four thirty on Thursday, April thirteenth. That's open.
Yep.
This is perfect.
And then what's the May thirty first?
Be do Randy a favor and jab everybody else.
And the board of review is May thirty first from five to seven. And so this would be, you guys have to decide if this is what you want to, I don't care about making a motion, but I mean.
I don't.
But I mean.
It's fine.
Let's see, initial motion.
I make I make a motion to do what, is it Andy?
Randy.
Randy, whatever Randy wanted us to do.
As proposed.
As proposed, yes. Somebody has to second it, though.
Somebody that's gonna be there has to second it.
That's.
I'll second it.
That's the day, May, Wednesday, May thirty first.
May thirty first.
Yeah.
That's the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I don't know if I'll be there. I could still be sick.
Could be.
You're over already, huh?
Right. Jesse, did you second that? So there's a motion a second for open book Thursday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, two thirty to four thirty, board of review Wednesday, May thirty first, twenty twenty-three, five to seven. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll post name. Aye, seven. Okay, uh, thirteen B, there's nothing here, econom- economic development considerations, research, about a year ago, we talked about it. Um, as far as, uh, just taking some initiative as a board member, if you want to, you are free to do that. I think we just said at the board last year was just make sure that Jared is kinda involved with the administrative offices involved early on. So if you feel like you have some research, some initiatives, whether it's downtown district or TIF or whatever it might be, you know, take take the initiative and just include Jared and get the ball rolling on something. Um, that said, there's gonna be a couple of things on on Thursday that I think we're gonna try to talk about a little bit, whether it's grants or economic development with on some some things we've been kinda kicking around, so.
Did we say five or six on that?
Five.
Five o'clock.
Yep, five o'clock. So we have some kinda, I think they're down mostly downtown district related things that we're gonna talk through. So that was it there, um, committee recommendations, nothing there, possible assignment to committee. You know, this is this, get started working on it, but if you if you wanna take a chance and look at the title seven, we, at least Jared and I had talked about, I thought we maybe had talked about this as a board before, but we we contract with the.
We've adopted the Eau Claire City Health Department as our.
Yeah, adopted this, our health department is Eau Claire County Health Department. I I think there's probably a little bit of a gap on how we leverage them, you know, and take advantage of them. One of the things might be they'll come in and and they'll do, they, I think for our Eau Claire City or area, they'll do apartment, uh, multifamily inspections. Uh, they don't, we don't really have anything that kicks it off and says, hey, ask them to come every two years or over the year. Um, so we'd like to just start talking about ordinance updates there, just kinda give the staff like, uh, uh, something periodically to do and just automatically do, uh, and figure out what that that would be with, uh, the health department. So this kinda started, I got a couple complaints, so I'll I'll keep pushing on those right now, because that's what it says, if we get a complaint, that the contact the health department. But just to be proactive, I think it would be good to kinda have it on schedule to do the, you know, or ask them if they would come and do inspections for different things at different times, because I think that's what they're offering. It's it's sort of some examples, but to just to go through the ordinance and and look at what's there and and how to refine that. Jared, anything else about?
No, um, just the the health department will administer or will enforce our ordinance and lack of our ordinance. I mean, we always, we always default back to the county's health ordinance, um, as far as what they can and can't enforce. But if we were to put some framework in place, if there was something we want specific in addition to or in place of the county, we would need to adopt that by ordinance, you know, for instance, if we wanted to say we're doing inspections on a complaint basis, or we're doing inspections on a five-year basis, or, you know, on a random selection, or just anyway, they said we do inspections more often than when we have a.
Complaint.
Complaint, or if we wanna leave it a complaint, that's fine, we can we can do that, but if we wanna do something more than just as a complaint basis.
Yeah.
We need to address it in ordinance, cause it's not there currently to do anything other than a.
We'll see, but I I think we've looked up before, like is it the city of Eau Claire does a schedule of inspections, or maybe it was Eau Claire County. We don't have anything, so it was look and see what others.
And what are they inspecting?
Oh.
And what the framework says.
Yeah, whether it's smoke detectors or CO or, you know.
It's for apartments.
Get out of the building, you know.
It's for apartments.
Whatever.
Things for any.
Yeah, so typically, it's only done in multifamily, you don't.
Typically, it's multifamily, yeah. So we, we have fire inspectors that go to commercial properties, but they go to apartment buildings. And, you know, maybe that's where Eau Claire County help.
We've run into this problem with the Eau Claire County Health Department before, though.
I don't know.
They're the most untrustworthy organization.
I don't.
I so.
I I we don't have the.
I got some friends there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know.
I I don't know either.
How how much power, I I.
I don't think you give them power, they just don't do anything until you ask, maybe.
Oh, okay, so that's where we're at.
I like the complaint.
They already are in the.
I like, I was gonna say, I'm already in favor of the complaint and not to to have them making regular inspections. I think we need to look at this, I think it should go to committee.
That's why.
Yeah, we need to look at it and examine it.
That's why it's under possible assignment.
Right, so which committee does it go to? I'm the chair of the health committee.
I think it should go there.
Uh, that sounds good.
Yep.
And it's title seven.
Yeah.
Second.
Title seven in county, the county code or ours?
So there's a lot of stuff in title seven, but in our title seven, we do adopt.
Yeah.
The health department as our health department, so there's a portion of title seven that talks about.
In our in our thinking was not to give permission to for the health department to do things periodically, but it was like for Jared to look at things and say, oh, it's been two years since that we've done inspections. Our ordinance says we can do it every year, you know, so I need to refresh, I'll call them and say, hey, can you.
We're already like under that umbrella of the county.
Right, right, so it's just more staff direction than than health department direction, that was the idea, but is you can go to the committee and kick it around and see what you find.
Does that supersede a facility that has state inspections?
Wouldn't necessarily supersede, but a facility that has state, um, inspections would not be exempt from a, um, health department inspection. So we can, we can set the framework to require or we really can do nothing or we can do something more, it's just that we do have, we've received quite a few complaints about a few complexes in particular that need to be inspected, and that's fine. Um, and if we want to continue to do it as a, you know, just call the president, the president will direct it. We can do that, but if we want to modify that at all, it's has to be done through ordinance, so.
Inspected because of, inspected because of the 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 fire or or why?
It could be.
What are the complaints that are?
Health, safety, sanitation.
Health and sanitation are what we're implementing currently.
Okay, okay.
Look at that committee. Roll it all in.
Please, let's do that.
We'll take it.
So that's it, we're done.